Joining us for the August seventeenth Louisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann, and because of COVID nineteen, the meeting's being held electronically and is being recorded. To request permission to speak during public comment periods, an attendee must raise their hand by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. Attendees calling in can dial star nine on their phone and a raised hand will appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and the clerk unmute you, they'll need to state your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you wish to speak on a different topic, go ahead and raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and helping us to maintain meeting decorum. We have a lot on the agenda this evening and just want to remind everybody that council members have requested that about every two hours we take a break. Just so people can stretch and fill up their water and get back to it. So I'll try not to split an agenda item with that break. So we'll try to find a national, a natural place for it, but we may have to split an agenda item if it comes to it. And then we'll wrap up at around ten, but if it looks like we can get through the agenda, we will. So if it takes an extra thirty, you know, if it looks like we're within thirty minutes of wrapping up, we might go a little bit over. But if we're right in the middle of something and it looks like we have several more hours of debate and discussion, then we'll go ahead and continue. So I just wanted to let folks know the plan. And with that, I'll ask our city clerk for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Mayor Stolzmann.
Here.
Councilmember Lipton.
Here.
And Councilmember Dickinson.
I see his screen there, Councilmember Dickinson, could you hear us? He is giving a thumbs. Oh, you cannot hear us? You can hear us. Okay, just kidding. It was a joke. I get it now. All right, Councilmember Dickinson is here as well. And so with that, could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. There's a motion from Councilmember Lipton and a second from Councilmember Member Brown. Is there any discussion of approving the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. That takes us to our public comment on items that are not on the agenda and items that are on our consent agenda. If there are any members of the public that would care to comment on items that they don't see on our agenda tonight or items that are on our consent agenda, please raise your hand and let us know what you'd like to tell us. Our first commenter this evening is RJ Harrington. And you might be muted on your end, RJ.
Doesn't look like it.
Oh, there you go.
Check one, two. Yep. Good evening, Council, neighbors. RJ Harrington, four, five, seven, East Rain Tree Court. Pardon my absence for the last several meetings. I meant to tune in from afar, but I took an electric vehicle road trip to the East Coast and back. And I'll have some more information to share about that during Agenda Item One, so I'm not going to touch on that right now. But mainly wanted to say hello and also bring to your attention the International Panel on Climate Change Report Number Six. I have not had the opportunity to send a link to your attention. Most of you are probably aware of it. It is close to four thousand pages. I have not read it all. But forty-two pages of it talk about exactly what the UN Director General said, which is code red for humanity. That concludes my comments on items not on the agenda this evening.
Thank you, RJ. Are there any other members of the public that would care to make comments that are not on our agenda tonight? All right. Thank you, everyone. I've seen no other comments. That takes us to our consent agenda. Could I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move.
Thank you. Thank you. It was moved by Councilmember Lay and seconded by Mayor Proton Maloney. Any discussion of the consent agenda tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. And that takes us to our council informational comments on pertinent items that are not on our agenda. Any council comments tonight? Seeing none, that takes us to our city manager's report.
I have no items this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Bosser, and that takes us to our regular business. Our first item on our agenda tonight is a discussion topic for council members' discussion direction on masking in indoor spaces. So I'll turn it over to our city staff for just a brief introduction and then we'll have public comments and then council discussion on this topic.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is Heather Bosser, the City Manager. Just bringing before you tonight the discussion direction on masking in indoor spaces. Per the Council Communication, Boulder County Public Health recently issued their new public health order on August ninth, requiring masks for everyone aged two and older in indoor school settings, as well as childcare and indoor youth sports, extracurricular activities intended for individuals under age nineteen. And this, yeah, so this requirement is for indoor masking applies to everyone regardless of vaccination status and includes program staff, volunteers, and spectators, again, as it respects childcare and indoor youth sports and extracurricular activities. The order applies to the indoor activity and not the setting, which means it applies to the Recreation Senior Center, the Library, the Center for the Arts, and any business facility or church with childcare or youth programs in that specific setting, not the facility, the entire facility. The city itself continues to strongly encourage masks indoors for everyone aged two and older in city buildings, regardless of vaccination status. Boulder County's transmission rate continues to be at the substantial level. Neighborhood counties including Wild, Larimer, Brumfield, and Jefferson are also experiencing, experiencing a high level of transmission. And the CDC's guidance urges all individuals in communities with substantial or high transmission rates to wear masks indoors, again, regardless of vaccination status. So we are here again today to check in with you about if you'd like to do anything more than the current Boulder County Public Health Order. So we've listed the options here moving forward. You can, as we have done previously, the city itself has done an emergency ordinance for indoor masking citywide. So we've included that previous ordinance and that would, if you'd like to move in that direction, that would require a future meeting and a future discussion on an ordinance. You can also direct the City Manager to require masking indoors at city facilities, which would be more restrictive than the current Boulder County Public Health Order, but something that we can do administratively. Or you can continue to use the language that we're currently using, which is to continue to strongly suggest masking indoors throughout the city, but not have a requirement beyond the current Boulder County Public Health Order. So we're happy to answer any questions. Myself, Megan Davis, the City Attorney, as it relates to options moving forward and any questions on potential, yeah, again, potential options. So happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so that takes us to our public comment period on this topic. If any members of the public would like to weigh in on masking requirements, please raise your hand at this time and let us know what you'd like to tell us. Our first commenter is RJ Harrington. Hmm. RJ, you disappeared on me. All right. There we go.
Pardon me, I didn't realize I had to keep my hand raised in order for you to unmute me. Hello again, RJ Harrington, four, five, seven, East Rain Tree Court. The clock can start ticking whenever. I told you earlier that I was able to participate in electric vehicle road trip to and back from the East Coast this summer. I drove through some particularly hot zones where the data proved that most folks were not vaccinated. Our family had the privilege to be double vaccinated, all members with Pfizer back in the spring. Nevertheless, I continue to double mask wherever I go. We continue to hear a lot of commentary and comments, people screaming at board meetings, et cetera, about how we need to be able to be free to do whatever we want. I suggest that the definition of freedom is great and let's have freedom of choice as long as it doesn't impinge or inhibit my right or anybody else's right to enjoy their freedom. Because so many folks have resisted protecting themselves, because so many folks have resisted protecting others, either with vaccines or masks. And now that the mutations and variants are running amok, who knows which Greek letter of the alphabet we are in now anymore. Certainly, Delta is impacting us significantly. I would suggest and strongly encourage council to step up another mask ordinance and repeat where we were last year so that those of us that do want to protect ourselves and others are encouraged by our community to do so. And those of us that are not really excited about protecting themselves and/or others are forced to do so. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, RJ. Any other members of the public care to comment on this agenda topic tonight? This is your opportunity to do so. Seeing none, that takes us back over for council questions, comments, discussion, and action. Any council members care to comment? I'll just provide a little additional background. Metro Mayor's Caucus has continued to meet throughout the pandemic with the public health directors from multiple agencies. And we're at a point where it really does seem like the different public health directors are taking sort of different tactical actions. They've been pretty united in the tactics they've been using, but I think people are getting weary. And they all agreed that masking indoors would be a good idea right now and that it would help protect people. And then there's just a difference of opinion of whether requirements will impact people's behaviors. And then additionally, they are talking a lot about vaccine mandates and where things are going with that. So we all saw on the news, Denver has put in place some vaccine mandates for certain employees and certain types of settings. And so it sounded like from public health, there'll be more of that to come. And maybe that's something for a future agenda, or maybe the City Manager just wants to update us on that in a future agenda where, where our community is going to go with that. But it does seem that, since I've put out the, the city strongly encourages max masking indoors, I've gotten a lot of feedback from residents by email and phone that they are confused as to like if they go in the rec center and, you know, the city saying masks are strongly encouraged, why don't they see the staff wearing masks? And so I think if we do want our staff to wear masks, and that is the expectation, then we may have to require it in city facilities because on the strongly recommended, we're not seeing the kind of behavior that we would necessarily hope for. Any other discussion or comments on this agenda? I'm just not seeing hands from people quite yet.
Um, so Mayor, just sorry, can I just ask a quick question? Wanted to clarify.
City Manager Bosser, please.
Uh, yeah, so just wanted to clarify, if we were going to require masks in city facilities, I'm assuming that would be patrons as well as staff. So just want to clarify that.
Right. What I, that was what I was talking about. Um, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm increasingly concerned with the way that our COVID numbers are going in Boulder. The, the transmission rate is high in Boulder County now, according to the CDC, which is even worse than substantial. That's concerning to me because it, it begins to put our city staff at risk. Folks who work in City Hall, folks who work in the rec center. And so, you know, I think, I think at the very least, I'm very, I'd be supportive of a mask mandate for, for, for our city facilities. It's, I know that other cities across the country have gone, you know, even farther, right? They've required indoor masking in Los Angeles, for example, in all facilities. And they've, and they've even go so far as, as to require masking at outdoor events. So, you know, we, we are certainly not on the bleeding edge of this by any stretch of the imagination. But it's, it's getting, it's getting worse, and I think it's, it's time for us to think about how we can protect ourselves again.
Councilmember Lipton.
So I would agree that it is getting worse, and I think it's going to continue to get worse, particularly with the university coming back into session and with schools opening up. And I think there is going to be a higher level of transmission. I, I do, I do have a couple of questions. First, have, have any municipalities yet implemented a community-wide mask order? I know you, you said there was some kind of talking about it. Has anybody actually done it in Boulder County?
Not to my, I think the question was directed at me and not staff, but just not to my knowledge that I don't think anybody has put back in place their mask mandates in Boulder County.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay. And then a second question is if, you know, related to the rec center, and I can't recall how we did this last time. For those patrons that use the, the indoor swimming pools, how, how would that affect their use of pools?
The City Manager Bosser, I think that one is directed at you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I get, so previously it was based on what guidance we were getting from Boulder County Public Health. So I assume we would do something similar and you, you most likely wouldn't be required to wear a mask in the pool. And so we would have to look at where those areas similar to previously, it makes sense to potentially not have those requirements. But, and we, we would look to what we had done previously as well, and Boulder County Public Health guidance.
Okay. And as related to our staff, do we, do we have any sense what the vaccination rate has been?
No, we really don't. We haven't had requirements for vaccine status or anything to that effect at this point, so we're not sure.
Is that something we should be considering?
Yes, that's something we're looking at right now as a potential phase in terms of vaccine mandates in the future. You know, a first phase could potentially be asking people for vaccination status, providing incentives to vaccinate, and then having some requirements for those who may seek an exemption or not be vaccinated.
Yeah, well, I would, I would be interested in pursuing that as well as some of the other things we'll be talking about. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think everybody who's talked so far, including RJ, have talked about the growing concern. I'm certainly one of those people. And I've seen it around me, quite honestly. So this is a good discussion and it's an appropriate time. And I, I have very similar sort of questions as Councilor Lipton. And I think the City Manager at least acknowledged the question about staff masking. I too believe that if we're going to be having, we need to lead the way. And, you know, I see that some retailers, I go into certain stores and you'll see all the people working there. Paul's Coffee is a good example. Everybody working there is wearing a mask. And I appreciate that. I, you know, I, I know there's some concern about do we ask or do we require vaccination? You know, to me, we don't know how long this is going to go on, and I have this growing and continual concern that it's going to keep going with those people who are unvaccinated. So I guess I would like to understand better what we should, what we should know about, what we can and can't do with requiring vaccinations, and if we require them, what it looks like. It's interesting to me, there's a hospital in Houston that required them, and they had initially something like two hundred people resigned. Of course, you had a lot of healthcare workers that applied for jobs there because they knew everybody was vaccinated. So that was sort of an interesting thing. I guess one question, maybe this is for the City Manager or the Director of Parks. When we talk about the rec center and are we talking about potentially, and I don't, I don't, this is going to seem like a stupid question, or maybe it's too complicated, I don't know. But we're going to have patrons masking, but with the same numbers of patrons in the building? Or would we do what we did before, where we reduce the number of patrons at the same time we require masking? So that's, that's the end of my comments and questions. If, if someone from staff could answer that, that would be great. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure, I can, I can answer that question. So there's, there's no, none of the guidance at this point suggests reducing numbers or spacing limitations per se. So the order speaks to, typically the recommendations speak to masking only for the most part. So that, that's, that would be our intent at this point.
Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, thanks. This has been a good conversation so far. I really appreciate the, the staff memo. I think it's very helpful. And I was like, the embedding of those documents is really kind of helpful, the embedding of the links, just for my own personal preference. I, it sounds like so far anyway, I'm looking down at the rec, the direction options that are there on page fifty-seven. It sure sounds like nobody so far anyway, and not everybody's spoken, but, but nobody's really talking about just strongly suggesting masking indoors throughout the city. I, I think certainly for my part, for all of the reasons that have been mentioned so far, I think it's, I think it would be good to protect our staff as well as kids, which we, we have to do anyway. You know, in the rec center and, and some other places. But to direct the, the City Manager to require masking at all city facilities. I, I just think at the very least, that's, it's a good signal. It's a coordinated effort. I think everybody on staff throughout the city gets treated the same. I think they have the same kind of workplace that they can expect. So I, I think at the very least, that is, that's a good thing to do. The, the step up from that, that is the requirement or potential requirement that we're requiring masks citywide is, is a little bit harder. And, you know, I'm, I'm weary. I think everybody kind of is a little weary, though the, the, it is certainly important. I think what, what Councilmember Brown said is that the numbers in Boulder County just don't look good at all. And I, I am really concerned about that. I am always a little bit more circumspect about requiring businesses and others to, to mask. As a general rule, I think Mr. Harrington would put it about as bluntly as you can, sort of forcing people who don't want to do it to do it. And that's really what that would require. And, you know, I, I'm just always torn and really want to hear from, from others. But I have twin nephews who are on the autism spectrum, but they are, one of them is immunocompromised. And two other people who my, my sister is fostering are also immunocompromised. And it's, you know, I worry about them. I worry about the kids who can't get immunized. I worry about, you know, the adults who for one reason or another can't. I worry about the people who choose not to also. I mean, I'm not, I'm not in that category of people who just says, you know, there, we should leave them to their own. So I, I'd like, I'd like to hear more about that. I, it seems like, and Mayor, you'll, you'll certainly help kind of fashion this. But it's, it seems like we're heading at the very least toward a number two. And at least we can, you know, I guess what I'd say is we, we probably are, you know, don't, not deleting, but we're heading away from that third option. And it's really a question of whether it's the first or the second. That's what I would say.
Thanks, Councilmember Lay. Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also am leaning toward at least doing number two. Number one may come about through Boulder County by the time we get through the whole process of, of putting an ordinance on and getting it all approved. But I will say that I, I am aware of a twenty-something young man who was fully vaccinated and still was infected with the Delta virus variant. And so this is not going away anytime soon. As was said, the Boulder County rates are going way up. And, and so I would lean toward option number one. Two would be okay to start. I think we should at least do that tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll probably follow suit on whatever council moves towards it. I think this is really hard in the sense that, you know, I think mostly what we're, actually, staff, does anyone have Louisville's vaccination rate versus just Boulder County? Do we have a, do we have that much information?
So that county has to run a special set of data, and so I don't get it every week from them. But about three weeks ago, I got that. Let me look on the calendar. Four weeks ago, I got that information from them. And we, it went, Boulder was the highest, Louisville was second highest, then Lafayette, then Long Lawn. And we were around ninety percent of our eligible population vaccinated. But of course, the kiddos can't get vaccinated, so that brings the overall number down into the eighties.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, my, you know, my, my sense is, and I, and I'm sensitive to what's going on in the country. And I, and I've been, hopefully, within my own company, a leader in trying to do more than is required. But I do struggle with the moment in that, you know, Boulder County, Louisville is ninety percent vaccinated. And so having a mask mandate, certainly number one, saying everyone must be masked at all times feels unnecessary for the work that the Louisville residents are doing to be vaccinated and to be protecting themselves and each other. I could probably get behind number two if that's where we're going. As, as a, as a group, I think number three is more than we've been doing in the last couple of months, which is to say, hey, this, this is still real, and people who are unvaccinated are still getting COVID. And people who are even, in rare instances, people with the vaccination are also getting COVID and in those instances are spreading it. It's all very scary and Delta, the variant is very scary, but, yeah, it just feels, you know, Boulder County, Louisville, Colorado, all these areas, it feels like we are doing beyond what is necessary to handle the pandemic. And we're surrounded by county-states and, and that, that aren't doing what they need to be doing. So we're going to do more. We're going to do more. And we're going to ask double vaccinated people at very low risk to be required to wear masks feels unnecessary. But as everything that we're doing, it's, it's, it's playing a part in our community and trying to set the right example. It just feels frustrating that our community would, would need to do that when really it's the communities that aren't highly vaccinated that need to be wearing masks, not Louisville. So, you know, I, I don't feel comfortable with one. I'm fine with three. I'll go with two if that's where the, the group is headed. And that's probably the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And so it looks like everyone in the second round of comments from folks and Councilmember Dickinson, I really appreciate you, you know, opening up like that. And I think you could tell from the tone and tenor of the conversation, none of us want to do this. We're all, it's all very disappointing where we are. The one thing I think I'll, I'll just kind of add on your comments, Councilmember Dickinson, is that unfortunately vaccinated people are able to spread the disease it looks like now. And so even though our community is really vaccinated and really will likely have good outcomes, should we get the disease? And that's great, and I'm really proud of the community for being so well vaccinated that we can still spread it. So the rate of spread is happening. My, I'm just trying to repeat to you what public health told us. And so I'm not a public health expert, you know, I could be getting this wrong, but I'm just trying to relay the message that was given to the mayor's group. And that is that when it starts spreading so quickly, then you could have more variants. And we don't know what the next variant will do, and we really don't want to spread the disease as quickly as it is. And if the, the chart that put me in the most state of sort of, I don't know, disappointment, frustration, whatever adjective you want to describe was seeing where we are in the rate of spread compared to last year and where we are in hospitalizations compared to last year. And so we're about, we're as bad, if not worse, than we were last year at this time with, with respect to those things. And so that's really frustrating because of all the hard work everybody's done. But the thing, I look ahead to say, okay, it's August. I remember what happened in October and November. And we were nearing breaching our hospital capacity with where we were and started, it started with this up ramp in August. And, and it was really close to required shutdowns of businesses. And so I don't want to say that. I don't want to say that, man, I really wish we would have just had people wear masks inside so we didn't get to that point. And I under, part of the frustration I think we're all having is that we're an eight square mile community. So what we do will not impact. The global trajectory of the pandemic, but it might impact what our neighbors do. It might impact what the communities near us do and communities that are pretty darned close to us. Have a very different perception on what they should be doing during the pandemic and there is exchange of people and ideas. So I have to believe it has some kind of an impact. It, it won't. Stop everything or fix everything for us to take action, but it's kind of like, well, what do we have responsibility over? What do we have control over? And what is our best bet? And so that's where I'm coming from, but I completely, I, I mean, your frustration that you described and you're sort of like. I mean, I totally understand where you were coming from and all of the comments that you made. I. I think we're just in a really tough spot. Councilmember Lipton.
Yeah, um, it's been an interesting conversation. So as related to, uh, um. Item two. I think I am getting closer to, uh, being able to endorse that. I am concerned about item one at this point. If we're ever going to get to item one, I would suggest we do some very, um. Vigorous community engagement. Before we just hop down on emergency ordinance. Uh, particularly with the business community, congregant care facilities. Um, you know, other facilities, other businesses and private entities that. You know, would be impacted and are already managing. Very well what they're trying to, to deal with. So I, I, I would be very reluctant as an emergency ordinance quickly to do something unless we're pretty much directed by the county that we. Absolutely should for number one. And I don't know at what point we start reaching out to businesses and, and congregant care facilities about number one, but you know, never. Hurts to start having those conversations earlier than, uh, than later. I think on number two. A concern I would have is how do you walk it back? So I know we've had this conversation before. So let's say we put in or mask ordinances and so on and so forth based on the. Predict, predictive data, but at what point do we say, okay, it's, it's okay to take off the masks? And maybe that's a little rhetorical at this point, but it's always the harder part of this. Is to eventually, you know, walk it back. So I don't know if. Heather or anybody on staff has any thoughts related to that. I mean, something we used to have the dial system and we had all these metrics. Now there's something that's. Bit different, but perhaps not as clearly defined. But at what point do we say, okay, it's okay to take off your mask in the city buildings?
Yeah. So I guess I would just say, you know, um. You know, our, we are having, we do have recommendations from Boulder County Public Health to mask indoors and that kind of, that changed. Um, in April and May, which is why we made the decisions we did about. Um, no longer requiring masks for those that were vaccinated and encouraging those who weren't to mask. So, a, and that's evolved as well. So I, I think we have to recognize it will likely change again multiple times as we see where, see where this goes and what's. What happens, especially as school starts. Um, I also think Boulder County, you know, if the numbers continue to get worse, I, I do believe that Boulder County Public. Health will make some decisions as well countywide. Um, or that would certainly be my hope anyway, um. So that, you know, consistently it would be applied throughout the county, um, in relation to masking indoors. Cause that's certainly a mitigation measure. Um, that can happen. Long before you have to do shutdowns and other things that we have to do previously, which nobody wants to go there again. So. Um, I, so I guess in response to your question, I would say. In a lot of respects, uh, we'll, we'll continue to follow Boulder County Public Health guidance and we'll look to that to help us make those decisions. Um, and they're partners and we, we've done that all along.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Lake.
Yeah, I, I wonder. Whether there is any information, uh, that we have about our own businesses in Louisville. I don't know whether. Uh. Staff has done any outreach to find out kind of what. Percentage of, of businesses, uh. Are, are requiring just on their own for people to be masked. I know that's permitted. Uh, it's not required yet. Um. But I mean, that's a, that's a something of an indicator, you know, whether there's a market. Uh, feature there that. Is, is, is good to know. So is there anybody on staff who has any sense of, of that?
Um, I don't, I don't know if, if Megan Pierce is on the line, um, if she wants to comment, but I, I don't believe we've requested that, any of information related to that recently, certainly.
Brett Cooper Pierce, did you want to add anything?
No, I don't have anything to add. I haven't heard anything on that very recently.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor Brett Tommelloni.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, it's interesting when I looked at these three. I'm just gonna start with number three. I, I was, um, in another. Colorado city yesterday and I went into a city market. It gives you an idea of direction I was. Um, and they had a sign on the doors that they strongly suggested masking and it was a grocery store. And when I went in there. I would say eighty percent of people did not have a mask, even though it was strongly suggested. So I struggle with that and I understand where Counselor Dickinson is coming from. I, I believe that. Most of my neighbors and fellow citizens in Louisville are double vaccinated. Um, but with the variants coming out, I'm, I'm cautious. So I could certainly support, uh, the second one, uh, to require masking indoors in city facilities. Uh, much like Counselor Lipton, I, I felt. We tried to attach the last ordinance to, um, an event, and I guess I would like to see some discussion of. When we rescind this. Um, and not having to take an action in a city council meeting. So if we reach some point of some metric. That we can all agree upon that makes sense. That this will automatically extinguish. If we could do something like that, and I know that may or may not be possible, but. I'd like, like to at least have staff explore something, some metric we could use, so that gets to the point of extinguishing this. Thank you.
Uh, so this is Heather again. Sorry, just want to clarify. So to do something in city facilities, it does not require an ordinance. Staff can administratively do that, the city manager. Uh, so it's only if you want to do it citywide that it will require, um, an, an ordinance. Um, and. We certainly can get directions from you tonight, just like we did, um, around previously before the orders came out. Around, um, childcare, um, and programming at, um. A city facilities that require masking that we had done that, that was direction that was provided. So that's, that's how this would happen in city facilities. Um, and certainly can come back at a later point as we, as it gets to the point, hopefully sooner than later where. Move, removing those restrictions, why and what that might look like. Um, but that does not take an ordinance, um, in city facilities. City administrator can make that, the city manager can make that decision.
Thank you, C- thank you, City Manager. I, I'm. You know, I, I, I probably used the wrong word there when I said ordinance, but yes, we would be directing you to. Um, to do this. I mean, that's, that's one of the things here. And I guess what I was looking for is a means of saying, we reached some point where. That direction is rescinded without having to have another. Discussion at council, just, just giving guidance to the city manager. So it's following a process that we all support. That, that was my thinking around that. And I'm sorry I brought up the word ordinance. That's my fault.
Thank you. And I'll go to Councilmember Brown next. Who sees hands up. It sounds, um, so I just wanted to sort of frame where we are and where I think we need to go to be able to wrap this topic up. So. It seems like there's general consensus of the group to give direction to the city manager to require masking in our city facilities. Um, and. The question I have is whether people want to give direction to staff to bring back an ordinance for our consideration at a future meeting. That would extend beyond facility, city facilities. And if they were to do that, what kinds of information it, we would want. So it sounded like if we have that discussion. There were some points of information people would like, like I heard, um, people would be interested to understand a business survey. Just on temperature and, uh, temperature of that action and on whether they were already doing it themselves. And then I heard people saying, if we were going to have that discussion. They would want to understand what kinds of things we would be looking forward to have a discussion to repeal it. So if, I don't think we need to have any more discussion on the second bullet. At, at some point we will need a motion on it. Just so that we can give that direction, because we give direction by motion. But if I could get some, um, clarity from the group. On whether we are going to give direction to bring back an ordinance, uh, for future discussion. And then, um, City Manager Ballster, at the end of all of that, if you could tell us a little bit about how you want to address, uh, vaccine mandate and what kind of process you. I mean, just this middle, this middle point, um, city manager require masking at indoor facilities. The city manager could have done that also without it coming to city council. So similarly with the vaccine mandate, I know other communities are just taking that upon themselves. So just. What next steps are on that would be sort of the last thing we'd need to wrap up. So, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually just gonna make that motion that just sort of summed up, and I'll go ahead and make the motion that. We direct the city manager, um, to require masking at all, uh, indoor city facilities of both patrons and staff. Explore. Or, um, direct staff to explore an ordinance, uh, that would be citywide. By collecting data from businesses and, and other pa, uh, parts of the community. It's a long motion, but you get, we can modify it, but at least for the purposes of discussion. There it is.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. And is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. And then you did, on my end, you cut out a little bit. And so just if you'll clarify on the latter half, so there was direction. Around the city facilities and then there was direction for the staff to bring back. A future council meeting and ordinance to discuss masking citywide with some additional data collection around businesses.
That's.
Is that the gist of it?
That's it. You got it.
Okay, thank you. And then so we can have discussion of the motion. Any, any discussion?
I'd like, uh, one piece of information to be included by staff. Um, and that's, uh, the, the point about. Setting some kind of metric at which point we would rescind this ordinance. So that it wouldn't have to come back to council for another discussion and another week or two weeks of delay.
Um, so I think that that, that, thank you, Councilmember Fahey, we can add that direction. I think that's a really laudable goal and Mayor Person Maloney set it out as well. If any of us have an idea as to what that metric is, I would encourage us. Not to say it tonight, because I mean, we don't have to create it tonight, the directions to come back with an ordinance. At a future council meeting, but I do think if people brainstorm about that and send ideas to staff on what those types of metrics might be, that would be pretty helpful. Um, cause it's pretty hard to know what's going to happen with variants and other types of things that would be the triggering event that. We're all good to remove this. Um, so please think about that and then send your feedback to staff. Any other discussion of the motion? Councilmember Lake.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I don't have the strong. Strong oppositionary, opposition to Councilmember Brown's. Motion. I don't think, I, I guess, uh, just because of the seriousness of it, it's not a bad thing to start. To have something that is kind of a working. Document and. So we're not caught flat footed. Um. I, I also. And at the same time, kind of concerned about staff workload and whether. This, you know, whether the county is actually doing enough. Work in this area to be able to provide. You know, the background that we need. Um. With, without our taking that step. And I, I just don't know. I, I guess it would be nice to hear. Uh, from staff, their, their thoughts about. You know, whether, um, this, you know, doing just what, what, uh, Councilmember Brown is suggesting in his motion. Is, is going to be duplicating any work, whether it's, um, maybe premature at all or. I, I would hate for a bunch of work to get done and then not to be able to make use of it. I don't think any of us wants that, but I think we want to be prepared at the same time. But I'd be interested in staff's input on that.
City Manager Ballster.
Um, you know, I, I guess I would say, you know, we're, we're continually talking with Boulder County Public Health. And, you know, we're, we're not the experts. And so I, you know, and there's a balance, just like the mayor referred to as well around. Uh, mandates versus recommendations. And, uh, I think we're all trying to figure that out. Um, I, I, you know. At some point, if the hospitalization rates and the other numbers that are metrics that are critical continue, if they continue to go up, my assumption is, is that Boulder County Public Health will do. Uh, a masking requirement. May, maybe that's. Not the case. I, I, so I, I think we just have to be careful that we're expecting staff to have an expectation about what's going to happen in the future when. This has been a roller coaster for all of us and we're, 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 we're not, we're not the medical experts. Um, you know, we were planning to have another. Um, update, um, to have Boulder County Public Health talk with you all. And so it's coming up at some point here soon. And so that might be helpful as well. Um. So I just, I, I, I can't answer, if I, if I could answer all these questions, I, I'd probably be doing something else. So, uh, you know, as we all try to figure this out. So. Uh, I, I don't know, Megan, if you want to add anything.
No, I think, you know, I think that you've kind of captured where we are. Um, I, I know there are some conversations. Um, countywide happening with businesses and we, you know, we're, we're working with public health to get sort of that context and information. Um. And I think they are, like Heather said, monitoring what's happening from, uh. You know, at the ideological perspective across the community, hospitalizations perspective and, um. I think that they potentially could go in this direction. So I, I'm not sure if a, a lot of staff work, I mean, we could certainly provide some of that information that we have seen to counsel. Um, we, I, we could have public health come to a meeting to share that with you so that you have a little bit more of that context around. The information and data that they're getting to help shape that decision. Um, those might two, be two options. Um, but I think that would be where we would have to get our information a, anyway.
Thanks.
So, um, I think out of that discussion, maybe what makes sense is just a slight tweak on the, maybe this is a friendly amendment for Councilmember Brown and Fahey to consider is that. Um, you know, we'll be moving in the direction that you described, but as an interim step. We would have a meeting with public health to be able to ask them. Our questions and then understand if they're going to, in a. Reasonably quick fashion, going to be implementing some additional, uh, restrictions or not. And then out of that meeting, give direction on the ordinance, on the types of things we would want to see in an ordinance that comes back. So like if, if public health says they're doing it tomorrow, we wouldn't have to. If public health says, yeah, you guys should do it and you should use this as the thing that you rescind, so that we could have that interim meeting to try, sort of refine the direction that we're. Trying to give to staff on the citywide ordinance. It doesn't really change the substance of your motion, I recognize, but just so that everybody's on the same page. That we would be having that meeting ahead of the other meeting. To get some more information. And then also, um, in the meantime, the city manager would put in place the requirement at all of our city facilities. Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, just one question, which is when would that meeting happen? Because the, I know that it sounded like the city manager was trying to schedule it. I recognize getting Boulder County Public Health here may not be very. Maybe difficult. I just want to make sure that we're, given the fast moving nature of all this stuff, that we're going to be able to have that before November, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, my, my take would be we try to do it for September seventh. Um. If that's, if that, if that, hopefully that's soon enough. That gives them a couple of weeks too, to see if that, we can get some of their folks to the meeting.
Correct.
Does that track with everybody's expectations? All right. So the motion on the floor is to, uh, direct the city manager to require masking in city facilities. And to bring back for a future meeting, an ordinance to discuss masking citywide. And to, in the interim, uh, before that ordinance comes, that we will have a meeting with public health to be able to get some more of our questions answered and help flesh out the details of that ordinance. All right. It looks like the motion or a second. I agree with how I've recapped their motion. Any more discussion of the motion on the floor? Councilmember Lake.
Yeah, was, wasn't a part, I thought a part of, uh, Councilmember Brown's motion had to do with obtaining also some. Input from the business community about how.
That is right, Councilmember Lake. Thank you for the reminder. So also getting those information that, uh, several council members asked for around. Um, some of the business, what, how much the businesses are already requiring masking and their, um. Whether they favor or disfavor this proposal. whether they favor or disfavor this proposal.
Could we include congregate care facilities also?
Yes. And I guess additionally, information on what's required in congregate care facilities from the state, because there are some additional requirements on them.
Yeah, I guess I would just add, you know, it's not a lot of time before September 7th. So I, I, or, or maybe you're talking about when the ordinance comes, which could be a little bit later, but I just want to be realistic about what kind of information staff can bring back in a short amount of time. So just, we'll, we'll, we'll do our best as we always do, but just want to be realistic about what information we're going to be able to obtain. We'll also talk with, as Megan mentioned, Boulder County Public Health and their county, there's a group that needs to coordinate with businesses as well. So that could be some of the information that's provided also.
All right. Is everybody clear on what we're voting on? All right, great. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. And that brings us to our next, so that passes, the motion carries, and that brings us to our next agenda item tonight, which is ordinance number 1811, series 2021. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to ConocoPhillips Campus General Development Plan, Redtail Ridge Master Plan. This is our second reading and public hearing as advertised in the Daily Camera on July 18th, 2021, and continued from July 27th, 2021, and August 3rd, 2021. I'll reopen the public hearing. Just want to let everyone know who's following along on the sheet that we're actually on the fourth bullet points, or on council questions and comments on this agenda item. That's where we continued it. So what we'll do is we'll continue with council questions and comments. And then we'll take additional public comments, and then there will be an additional applicant comment period to respond to any comments that have come up throughout the hearing. And then we'll come back to council for more discussion. And so to kick off our council questions and comments section, I'm going to turn it over to our Planning Director, Zakaro, who provided some additional documentation in response to council questions that came up at the last public hearing or in the week between. And so he'll take us through that, what's additional in our packet, and then we'll get back to where we were with council questions and comments and continue on. Directors Zakaro?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Stolzmann, members of the City Council. I'm going to review, just with this PowerPoint slide, some of the questions that council asked at the August 3rd meeting. So there was a supplemental memo.
I apologize, Directors Zakaro, we need to take a five-minute recess.
Sure.
And so we, it is 6:53. I apologize for starting and then breaking, but we'll take a five-minute recess and we'll be at 6:58. Get everyone?
Has to go through a general development plan. So that's what we're looking at this evening. There are, you know, neighborhoods, especially a lot of residential neighborhoods in the city that didn't go through GDPs. They were, they just went straight to PUD for their subdivisions. So there's a specific set of code criteria related to this. These zoned, this zone district and general development plans are meant for large properties, so properties that are over 30 acres in size and that are under single ownership, so that there can be coordinated development. And the idea of the GDP is to have a little bit of a customized zoning document for the property before you proceed into plating and PUDs for the specific lots. So the criteria that you have for a general development plan are included up on the screen here. So this is what's supposed to be included within the general development plan document. So there's these four bullets. So the third bullet is the proposed location of school sites, parks, open spaces, recreation facilities, and other public and quasi-public facilities. So this is, I think what this means is that as this development goes through all of its next steps through plating and PUD, that the general development plan should generally show where a developer intends to dedicate all of these public lands. They don't get dedicated with the GDP that, but most of our GDP show where they're intended to be dedicated or the proposed location. So that's your criteria for this evening, but the background is, is that there's going to be plating that's going to take place, where there will be formal land dedications and deeding of that land to the city for those public lands. There will be PUDs. So this is, since we have an opportunity to look at the site as a whole, it makes sense to plan for those public land dedications now with the GDP. So a general development plan will typically really address the subdivision plating requirement. That's primarily what we look at, but not exclusively. As I'll point out in some of our code language. So when a property is being subdivided, 12% of the land for non-residential or 15% for residential has to be dedicated for some public use. It's often open space, but it could be any other public use. So you can also do cash and loo, as you know, some developments do that instead of providing the land. Just looking at other public land dedications of other general development plans in the city. You know, we calculated what we saw, and we saw a range of 12% all the way up to 46% within different areas of town where we have general development plans. So at the top of this table here, you can see what the proposal is. So they're proposing of their gross acreage, 67 acres or 17% of their total land area. So that does exceed the minimum plating requirement. As we talked about at the last meeting, there is an 81-acre exemption from this platted public land dedication requirement. So if you take that acreage out, they're at 21%. So you could see where, again, depending on the development, some of them have met the minimums. Some of them have provided more than the minimums that are required by our subdivision code. I did put in ConocoPhillips campus so that there was never a formal dedication. This is going to replace that if it's approved. They were proposing 58.9 acres. And that, that included 38.9 acres within the boundaries of the development, and then 20 acres within Boulder County outside of the corporate limits of the city. But total, it was 58.9 acres. So that's just a little bit of background. So outside of the subdivision code and our general development plan code, which is what we're actually implementing with this application, there are two sections of the planned unit development code that allow City Council to require additional public land dedications. And it very specifically says these can be in addition to the public, public land dedications that would be required under the subdivision code. So the first one relates specifically to open space, and the other one is related to waivers. You know, oftentimes, when you get to the PUD level, there are waivers requested. So the first section says that there could be additional open space through a planned unit development, and it sets forth five criteria that can be considered by council. Certainly, if there's any policies in the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, the, the topography, the physical attributes of the land, such as vegetation, drainage, type and density of developments, all, any of these, or, you know, need for open space as it's, as it's defined in any city policy, need for recreation facilities. So these are the criteria that you could be considering as well with the general development plan. So when somebody's requesting a waiver through a PUD, so that's when they want to vary from the zoning code or design standards, one of the criteria that could be considered is that they are providing additional public lands. And this one specifically says it's usable open space in a common park area in excess of those public use dedication requirements. So these are all of the layered criteria that we have for public land dedication. So I just wanted to lay that out, hopefully fairly clearly. I think council had asked for that at the last meeting. Then I wanted to talk about how this application evolved over time. So as you know, this is the second version of this application. There was a previous version, but the open space and public land dedication has remained mostly consistent with the original proposal. So last year, when we were working with the applicant on the original proposal, we held meetings with the Open Space Advisory Board and the Parks and Public Landscaping Advisory Board to review different concepts. And they actually did a formal site visit, which was a publicly noticed, you know, public meeting open to everyone, pre-COVID, where we actually went around the property, reviewed the property, and reviewed a couple of concepts. So there was version A and version B that were reviewed by staff, by the advisory boards, other members of the public that participated in those meetings. And the feedback and in working with, with the applicant, there was a preferred version B, which is very similar to what is being proposed this evening in the general development plan. And so I'll, I'll go over some of the differences in those, but what was considered in staff's review was that there was a preference for locating the open space where there was previously mostly undeveloped land. So you can see on an aerial, and I'll show you in a moment. There's a clear area where the storage tech development was, and then areas to the north where there were less, there was less developed or not previously developed property. So there's a preference for putting open space and parkland in those areas. There was additional vegetation. There were some drainage ways that provides some more conducive areas for habitat. And, you know, trails, more scenic ways for trails. So that was all considered. There was a desire for the park area to be closer to the existing residential neighborhoods in the city as well as the school. And then also to provide a buffer between development on this property and the school and those neighborhoods. There was also a desire to have a continuous view corridor through the property. And then the Northwest Parkway IGA does have a requirement for a buffer between the Paradise Lane residential property. So these were the these were some of the main considerations that went into the development of the plan. So here's an aerial, and you can see, this is, I've labeled Disk Drive. So there, you could see where the footprint of the previous storage tech development was, and you can see how north of that was largely undisturbed compared to south of Disk Drive. So Campus Drive is the northern boundary of the development. You have 88th over here Northwest Parkway over here. So we've, we overlaid the proposal. So this is the proposal on the GDP. So you can see that the, the darker green is the open space area. And there is an intent to cover most of the natural drainage way that goes through this area. It is bisected by Campus Drive. Here's the park area that's more adjacent to the neighborhood and the school. There is a public safety facility included in there. That's the red area, but that would be a public land dedication. And then these blue areas. So there are dedicated trail corridors as well that count towards the 67-acre public land dedication proposal. So you can see the area north of Disk Drive and then those, those more natural areas with more of the, of the trees that exist out there, and perhaps that's more of the, of the trees that exist out there and perhaps that's more conducive to habitat was the, the focus of the proposal in those areas. There was a question from council to to look at the, the trees within the property, especially as they may relate to wildlife habitat. You know, we didn't do a deep dive into that. We didn't have a significant amount of time between the last meeting and this meeting. So what we have for you this evening is really just kind of this aerial analysis showing some clustering of trees on the property. And then where the open space and public land proposal is. I would mention that over here on the east side of the property, there is a pond area and then the Good Hugh Ditch that runs through the property was where there is a significant amount of vegetation. The proposal does include, even though those are within potentially, within preserved areas or potentially preserved areas, those would be modified with the development. So there would have to be some restoration taking place within those areas. The applicant did provide a wildlife habitat management memo within their application materials. They do have an excerpt on tree management. So that was included in the packet as well. It's not specific to certain trees or certain areas of the property, but it does have some general guidance for tree management. So I just wanted to point that out as well. There's a question from council about regulated wetlands on the property. There is a small section of the Good Hugh Ditch that is a regulated wetland under the Clean Water Act. So there could be the potential for Army Corps four oh four permit regulating development. It is exempt. So there is a letter in the packet from Army Corps of Engineers exempting this wetlands from four oh four permitting requirements. So council also asked about building electrification, building code requirements, policies, local codes, some background research on that. So what staff pulled together were two state legislative items. The first is House Bill nineteen twelve sixty-one, the Climate Action Plan to Reduce Pollution. So we included in the packet the report issued by the Governor's Office, which is the Colorado Greenhouse Gas Pollution Reduction Roadmap. So this, that report does discuss building electrification and it references two reports from the Colorado Energy Office related to what they call beneficial electrification. And it has a market potential and a market barriers report. And the market potential report does have a, a fairly lengthy discussion on electrification policy and implementing, you know, new building construction with all electric appliances. It does talk a little bit about industrial electrification. It does note that that is particularly challenging. There are a lot of industrial and manufacturing processes that do use gas fuel. And so it provides a lot of challenges just because of the, the number and type of different processing that uses gas. So I think as you see some of the other vocal, you know, some of the local code examples we were going to discuss, that's kind of the last thing to evolve when it comes to building electrification, I think, because of some of those challenges. Senate Bill twenty-one two forty-six, which is a, a new state law this year, the Healthy and Efficient Homes and Building Act. So this directs electric utilities to implement plans that provide incentives and action plans for high efficiency electric appliances. There are targets for low-income households, education and training with, that are going to be required. And plans must be filed with the Public Utilities Commission by April first, twenty twenty-four. So that's a new law that's going to be implemented over the next several years. But it does have a lot to do to promote electrification of new construction. As far as local codes go, I think the, the the most developed example is Denver's Net Zero Energy for New Buildings and Homes Implementation Plan. So Denver does have a goal to adopt a twenty twenty-four building code that would require all residential development to be all-electric. They are, and then for most commercial construction by twenty twenty-seven, so they specifically call out hotels, office, retail and warehouse. They do note that the plan doesn't address manufacturing and industrial processing use of natural gas at this point. And again, I think that's because of some of the challenges with that. We, we couldn't find any local codes that were adopted in Colorado. There are a handful in California. We did include the Cupertino California one. They have adopted a code that requires that all new construction be fully electric, but they do include exceptions. These include factory research and laboratory, building occupancy types. They know essential facilities. So those are police, fire, probably hospital, those types of things. Non-residential kitchens. So a lot of professional cooking facilities, food manufacturing have been exempted at this point. And then they note accessory dwelling units, which I didn't quite understand why that was included, but that was included in their exemptions as well. Their code does require that for any development that qualifies for the exception, that they be pre-wired. So if there is a natural gas appliance, that there is a pre-wiring for an electric appliance installation in the future. So they're, they're electric ready, basically. So that's an example of a local ordinance. So I know there's a lot of discussion about what would go into the Sustainability Action Plan for this development. So we provided that background per council's request. And with that, I'd be hence happy to try to answer any questions the council has about supplemental information or the application.
Any questions on the supplemental information that was provided to us in the packet or in this presentation? Just Director Zakara back earlier on, there was a table that showed land dedication by a variety of different developments. And on there you have listed ConocoPhillips, what was proposed. And you mentioned some off-site Boulder County properties that were being proposed to be developed. Were those designated in the county? Were those donated when that application went in and platted? Or does the new owner own those properties and have plans for those? And are those included in any of the numbers that you have for Redtail Ridge there?
Sure, yeah. So the, so the ConocoPhillips Campus General Development Plan was accompanied by a PUD, preliminary PUD. So they came through concurrently. The preliminary PUD had more detail about public land dedication. And it specified that there would be twenty acres. It says located in the county. It, it says around Paradise Lane. So it, they don't identify by parcel, but I think it includes some of the parcels around Paradise Lane, immediately north of the property was the intent. And it says that those twenty acres could be either deeded to the city or they could remain under private ownership and have a conservation easement placed over them. But they were counting it as, you know, they were categorizing it as a public land dedication with that application.
Thank you. And so, so did that happen? Was it dated?
No, no, yeah, that was never, no, the, that was never finalized. There was no deeding of property nor conservation easement placed over those properties.
And so does the applicant now own those properties? And do we have any visibility into the plan for that part of the project or not?
Sure. So I believe the applicant owns, I, I think what was intended to be part of that dedication. So those are the, but I, I don't know what the applicant intends to use those properties for. They have not been included in this proposal in any way.
Okay. So those numbers aren't included in, in any of these public land numbers for the new?
No, yeah, yeah. The proposed sixty-seven acres are separate from those properties within the boundaries of the property within Louisville.
Thank you. And then you brought up some comments around the planned community zone district zoning. And I just wondered, so on these land dedications, when they're for open space, do we have the applicant go through the process of zoning them as open space? Or does then that additional cost fall on the city since we put open space in our open space zoning category?
So we, I think in the past, when properties have been deeded as open space, I'm not aware that they've been zoned concurrently with those deeds that I'm aware of. We haven't discussed that with the applicant in this case. I think those would be formally deeded at the time of final plat. And so if there was a desire to zone those concurrently, I, I think it's feasible that we can run that rezoning at the same time of those properties being deeded with the final plat. If that was council's desire.
Thank you. Councilmember Fahey?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes. Rob, I'm, I'm confirming now that the sixty-seven acres public land area does not include that portion that's in Broomfield, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, and the Centennial Valley area, it said that the, the gross land area is eight hundred and eighty-two acres, three hundred and four being public land. Does that include what was Boulder County or is that just City of Louisville?
About three hundred and four acres is within City of Louisville that was dedicated under that general development plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Rob, maybe you can't tell this off the top of your head. But I'm one, I'm struck by the, the the picture that you, you, you showed of the, so the, the previous development as well, the aerial shot. Yeah, there you go, that one. And the part that had been previously storage tech and then the part that is proposed for, for, for protection. And I'm, I'm wondering, what, do you have any idea what the acreage is north of Disk Drive?
Um, I, I think it is approximately a hundred and sixty acres north of Disk Drive, but I can measure and confirm that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Brown was a little faster than I was expecting, so anyway. Rob, the question I have is, go back to the, the chart with the numbers on there about the land dedication. Before I ask my question, thank you very much for listening to our questions and coming with the, back with this very, very effective presentation. Uh, the question I have on this is the Coal Creek Ranch. So that's a residential area in Ward Three. And a hundred and four acres, is that essentially the golf course?
Yeah, that's a large piece of the golf course was dedicated with that development.
Okay, so that, that particular land has Coal Creek running through it. And I would, I'm good, this is a question, but I'm surmising that most of that is in the one hundred and five hundred year floodplain. Is that correct?
Yes, large part of that is within the FEMA floodplain.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. And we'll give Director Zakara. Did you want Director Zakara to calculate Councilmember Brown's question in this meeting? Or did you want to follow up differently? Sorry, I guess I should have asked that before I went on to the next person.
If, if you can do it quickly, that would be great. If, if, if it's, if it takes too much time.
I, I also see.
I have a decent enough sense, but if we have a better sense.
I also see that Lisa Ritchie, another planner that's also fantastic is on. Maybe Lisa, if you could take that on for Rob so he can continue discussing things with us. Would that be okay? I didn't hear back from Lisa.
It, it, it is approximately a hundred and sixty acres. I've been able to calculate it. There's an excluded small area in the northwest corner, but it's very roughly, I'd say, I think a hundred and fifty-five to a hundred and sixty acres.
Thank you, Directors of Care. That's, looks like that's good enough for.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Order of magnitude estimate. Councilmember Lay?
If you go back, Directors of Cards, that picture that we were just looking at a moment ago of the, the aerial view. I guess, yeah. And you had, and it might be helpful if, if you used your pointer. I'm using my pointer on mine, but I realize that that doesn't really show up in anybody else's. If you can show us the, the place it's in the, did you say it was in the floodplain in this?
Yeah, there, there's no, there's, well,
I'm sorry, I think I used the wrong term.
Yeah, so there's, there is a drainage way. You can kind of see it generally in this area moving through here. So there is some drainage through here that you can kind of see where the vegetation kind of follows that drainage. So that's what we were discussing. You know, it's relatively natural, certainly. You know, I don't know pre-storage tech, what was actually there, how much it's been changed over time, but it's certainly in a relative natural state compared to south of Disk Drive.
Okay. And, you know, it, this is, this may sound like kind of a silly question, but of the, can you put the, the rest of the color back into it that you had there before? There we go. In the area that, that is proposed for open space right now, how much of that is, is buildable or, or usable in, for some other purpose, if, if it were shifted or whatnot? And I'm not suggesting to do that. I'm, I'm mostly trying to gauge a little bit of the, if you will, some of the altruism of of the applicant.
Sure. So I, I don't know that there would be anything specific that wouldn't allow you to develop within the open space areas. I mean, there are certainly overhead utility lines in this yellow area here, which, you know, wouldn't allow you to probably develop within proximity of those overhead lines, but you could develop in close proximity to them. You know, there's no regulated floodplain. There's no wetlands. There's just topography. You know, that would, would in certain areas, but you know, with, with overlot grading, to the best of my knowledge, you could probably develop most of the areas that are proposed for open space and parks.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So just not seeing any hands, just reminding people kind of the path we were on last time with our council questions and comments. We were working through these different elements of the general development plan, one by one. So the topic we were actually on when we continued was open space, which seems like with these questions and follow-up that we've taken, we're still on that topic. And different council members were sort of expressing the way they viewed how to meet the criteria and the requirement. And just I'll sum up roughly what I sort of remember is, you know, some council members were looking at the minimum requirement and then others were discussing, saying, well, which things are required to enable these other features? And then what does that result in in the calculation? And is that above or below the minimum? And if it's above, then you satisfied it. And if it's below, then you would need additional. And so the, if, if you don't mind backing up one slide, Rob, just so that we don't see the drawings on here. The area that I was sort of, had started talking about that I don't think we have resolution around is that pond on the far east side of the property that's being encircled by the mouse right now. And so it seems like from our comments from our open space board and from our principals in our code, that that pond and the other ponds that are kind of connected in a network are important to preserve as open space in the development. And I'm not convinced that the way the buildings are shown in the general development plan clustered around that pond and that the four-lane road running next to that pond accomplishes that open space preservation. So I would like to see required dedication in this area that then connects all the way through that channel, wildlife corridor, whatever you want to call it, so that there is the view shed maintained, the waterway maintained and continuous open space buffer maintained. So I just think that the way the buildings encroach into that pond goes too far to the north on that property. And then, you know, I just, I'm, I'm not convinced that there's a meaningful buffer to satisfy the requirements of the Northwest Parkway IGA on the north side of the eighty-acre parcel. So I think just expanding that further south and really having a continuous buffer on that section is important to meet the requirements of our code. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you. I, I had a, a question in this very vein. And this is one of the things that we
Thank you. I, I had a, a question in this very vein, and this is one of the things that we discussed two weeks ago when we were, um, having this discussion. And, um, Rob, the question's for you. One of the things that we heard was, um, if, uh, we had a, um, a, a more linear approach to building height, we would have more, this is a term I'm not familiar with, community open space. Because it would reduce the amount of footprint. And so my question is, would this particular area that the mayor is talking about, would that be more freed up from buildings near it if we had greater building height to the west? I believe that was one of the proposals, but if you could enlighten us in that particular topic, I'd appreciate it.
So the way the proposal is crafted currently is, and it's broken into two sections. So there's parcel C three, which is just south of the lake. And what is proposed is if with the future PUD, the city council were to approve building heights in excess of three stories within parcel C three, the applicant would preserve the crosshatched area in B and C three as private common open space. So, um, that term is in our PUD code, and it's, it's, it's typically preserved undeveloped land in a natural state. And it can be in private ownership with some type of restriction, or it could be deeded to the city. The proposal for you is that it would remain private, but that there would be a deed restriction to preserve the land in the crosshatched area if C three is developed with taller buildings. Likewise, in parcel A, if there was a future PUD in parcel A, the crosshatched areas in parcel A would be preserved with that deed restriction. Um, so it's broken into two different parts where that could trigger, um, that restriction.
Okay, so that, that raises two questions. My mind, um, the building height would go from what to what? And then my second question is, um, the restrictions we could, that we could put on that private open space, could it be done in such a way that it also meets the same level of expectation for a city-owned open space?
Yeah, so, th- there wasn't a specification of height. Um, you know, I think the applicant in previous versions of the application, you know, wanted to go to four and five stories. Um, five stories you might expect around up, up to ninety feet, including parapets and those types of things. That's what we've seen people want to do at five stories, is, you know, up to ninety feet. But that's not specified in the proposal. It just says, anything above three stories, up to five stories is the range, but we don't specify the actual height that might be contemplated with the future PUD. As far as, um, you know, what we could have for expectations of ci- I, so there's a couple of things is how it's managed, or maybe how it's accessed by the public. So I think city council could consider, um, you know, the way it's structured right now, those private common open spaces, um, would have no access from the public other than through the trail that's blue or a trail around the lake, but the rest of it would not be guaranteed public access. So, you know, the proposal could be amended to include public access in some areas. Um, the, the, the planned community zone district agreement specifies the provisions that would have to be in the deed restriction. They're probably, you know, it specifies it has to be natural vegetation. You could have split rail fencing. You could have private amenities like picnic areas, but you can't have any other developments. So there are some provisions in there, so I think if you wanted to look at more stringent provisions for natural landscaping, that could be contemplated as well.
Thank you, Directors Akara. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney. Councilmember Lipton?
So the, the common open space, I'm just trying to think of a kind of example that in the community. That, that would be similar to what we have like in Centennial Valley, correct? We have some areas that, you know, are not developed. I guess they're privately owned. But the public generally can use them, or walk through them, or, you know, whatever. Or another example is across the street at, uh, um, Interlock, and where they have a large amount of like, non-developed areas, people play frisbee, they access it, there's trails on, you know, running through it. And that, that open space, I don't believe is dedicated open space. So, you know, it, it, it seems to me like, you know, some, some businesses may have security requirements and absolutely, absolutely would need to keep, you know, the public out, but I think, you know, the, um, actual enforcement of keeping public out of these common open spaces is, is fairly rare, certainly in Louisville, but, you know, other parts of Old County. Um, I, I do have a question, though, on parcel C three. You know, I wonder how much of this is fungible. It, it seems to me, th- there could be benefits to having common open space around the po- the pond, but I'm not convinced that having tall buildings and surrounding that open space in the pond is the right solution. Uh, but is any of this fungible? I mean, if we wanted to look at more building height, could that be moved to a different parcel in order to allow for some of the thinking that we've got for C three in terms of common open space?
Yeah, I meant, as far as a question on that, I, I think that, um, you know, that there could be opportunities for taller buildings on other parts of the property. Um, I, I would defer to the applicant on their desire, or maybe some of their reasons for wanting to have the taller buildings on C three versus other areas of the development. Um, I think that, you know, the development, as you go to the east and southeast, the topography drops. So there's pros and cons to having taller buildings in that area. They'd be probably fairly visible from US thirty-six, but they would also be on a lower points of the property as well, so. Uh, it just depends on what you want to achieve from the aesthetic and view corridors for the property.
So, I mean, other than the interest of the applicant, perhaps, uh, indicating some change in thinking. I mean, we, we can do that. I mean, it, like, like my question was, some of this is fungible, notwithstanding some of the other policy, uh, um, priorities that we might have in terms of how this develops out.
Yes, yes, I think so. I think that, I, I would say that under a general development plan, and some of the reasons we've, it's so complex, is that a general development plan says that you can't change the underlying, um, you know, bulk and zoning standards, so setback in height and some of those standards that we have in zoning, you're not supposed to significantly change. It doesn't say they have to match exactly. So we're trying to set up an intent, but we've deferred building heights to PUD because of that restriction within the GDP code. But yes, I would say that if we want to set the intent, that intent is fungible as we're trying to set it up on this plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, not seeing any other heads, I just sort of want to, I guess I'll frame a question and sort of encourage some of the folks who haven't spoken yet to weigh in. So, uh, um, I think, you know, among the best of colleagues and, and everything, there's sometimes a different viewpoint, and I think we're gonna have to work, I, it sounds like there's a difference of opinion and approach on this from what I'm hearing Councilmember Lipton and Mayor Proton Maloney, um, discuss to what I would be describing. So I'll just first clarify with Directors Akara that, um, one, uh, just clarifying that it is the, it is within, uh, the judgment of the council to determine where we need open space with regard to this application.
Yes, I think it's within the judgment of city council, and, you know, typically that's, I think you're judging the proposal that's before you, and you need to make, take action to some extent on the proposal that's before you. But oftentimes, as these, um, applications are reviewed, there is some, um, you know, discussion with the applicant during this part of the hearing, you know, about maybe certain conditions that could be placed on the application.
Thank you. And, and then the second part of my question is that, you know, there's no requirement for council to accept the proposal for private open space or public open space, just we can, we need to determine where open space is required, and whether or not there is a compromise that can be reached, or whether it's acceptable to us what's been proposed or not.
Yes, I think that's part of this process. Yes.
Um, so, uh, what I, what I'm hearing proposed from Mayor Proton Maloney and Councilmember Lipton isn't necessarily the direction that I would go. I, I think there's a, a good argument to be made, and it's fairly clear that the topography, drainage, vegetation, and other physical conditions are important factors that are required in our city code when considering the location of open space. So, um, I, I think the vegetation and drainage is the good argument for why we need the drainage way and the vegetation and the trees to be preserved. And, um, the issues with having the pond with the development around it, it impacts the view shed and the drainage way. And, um, the overall need for open space and recreational facilities from this development. Um, so just to add to, you know, some of my argument as to why that C three lot, that whole area needs to be added in as open space, um, to preserve that view shed and the corridor. Um, if you look in the packet, we got comments from Boulder County. Uh, and the Boulder County comments talk about, uh, as a referral agency. Um, and they say the northeast corner of Area Five Drainage Pond, C five, included, uh, as public purpose, Eastman on sheet two. They say there's an unidentified yellow-green area. What is the yellow-green area? Given the plans for the site, this area should be removed from developable parcel boundaries and satisfy this open space. Um, and they go on to talk about additional requirements of open space in the buffer area in that pond. So I think our referral agency partner, you know, has indicated the need for more space in that area. As I mentioned last time, the open space board indicated that a need for more open space in that area. And I just think if we don't preserve more space around that pond as actual open space, that we won't have, uh, developed the site with regard to the, the requirements that are set forth before us as council members. So I would encourage us to add additional space around that lower pond. And then I have other comments within transportation around the streetway, and I have questions around the streetway. But I have concerns about running this four-lane highway right next to that pond as well. Um, so I'll bring up my transportation concerns around it and questions around it in the transportation section of the discussion. But I do think that it negatively impacts that open space as well of where it's proposed. And I think pushing the exit to the property like it was done with Conica Phillips further, um, so that it exits the property further to the north, and the hookup to the road would be further to the west. I think both of those things would help preserve the open space property in a better fashion. Count, uh, so next, uh, is, sorry about that. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm not sure how my comments led you down the path of some level of certainty. Um, I do like the way that Councilor Lipton, Lipton mentioned, what's fungible here is. So let me just, you know, be very clear in my statement here. I'm interested in preserving some more open space here as well. What I'm looking for is how we can work with this development in such a way that we do that as well as, uh, enable them to have a successful development. So I'm looking for a balance here. Um, when I was, my questions for clarification were just that. Um, but I would like to see us, uh, preserve this area more effectively. Um, and the term I used there in the last meeting was, I was looking, if we were gonna ask for more or different, I would like it to be purposeful. And I think you, Mayor, have articulated very well. Um, it is purposeful, and I agree with that. So I'm just looking for us to be able to uh, be flexible in our thinking about enabling a successful development while also preserving purposeful open space. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney. Councilmember Lipton?
Well, I think I generally agree with Proton Maloney's characterization of this, and, um, I, but I, I, I wonder, are there other aspects of the open space dedications that are gonna be, uh, of concern? I'd like to be able to see this in total, in its, you know, totalitarian, in a totalitarian fashion, instead of just picking one piece off at a time. So are, are there other issues related to the open space dedications?
I'm just making sure you're finished with your comments, Councilmember Lipton? Councilmember, I was just making sure you were finished with your comments before I go. I like, I understand you asked a question that we'll each take turns responding to that part, but I just didn't want to go on to the next person if you had more comments.
Well, if we're gonna go to the other comments, I'd like to have some comments related to the question I just asked, and not get diverted off into other things.
All right, so if we can all just put a pin in our general comments on the open space, and Councilmember Lipton has asked if there are other areas of open space that folks want to focus their attention on, so if we can just focus on that question, and then circle back to other open space comments. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think that, you know, the developer has identified portions of the, of the sort of, I think, uh, Mayor Proton Maloney used the words, uh, purposeful open space? What, what was the term we were using? But I, I think the, the highest quality open space here, previously undeveloped, or at least, you know, within recent history, exists above Disk Drive, north of Disk Drive. And, you know, what they've done is they've protected, it looks like, a, a good portion of that. Um, but I do think that there's, to your point, Mayor, about the pond, um, in, in particular, that area around in parcel C three is not protected. But I think there's also areas in that drainage area, uh, in, in parcel A one, um, that are not, that are not protected and should be. And, you know, I'm, I'm of the opinion that we, we really need to protect that, as much of those areas above Disk Drive as possible, because that is the most natural area, the most natural habitat, and would, would retain a sort of wildlife corridor, um, there. So, so that's, those are the portions of, of the open space that I'm gonna be looking towards, um, and getting a, a bigger chunk, um, to, towards, towards, uh, the land, the public land dedications.
Councilmember Dickinson?
So are we, I mean, is it as simple as proposing that some of what is projected in A on the far western side be reallocated to C three? In that we're not asking for additional, we're asking for location, right? Like, not quantity, but location? Or are we asking for additional, uh, open space dedication? Right, uh, wh- wh- which one are we doing right now? Are we trying to ask for more, or trying to change where it's happening?
I think Councilmember Lipton was asking the group to ponder if, so he, he didn't want to just pick off one area at a time. He wanted to holistically understand our people. So after we deal with the C property, am I then gonna start in on A, and then am I gonna start in on B? That's what he was trying to get after, I believe. So Councilmember Brown is identifying that there are, what I think I heard you say, Councilmember Brown, is that there are areas within A that are important to preserve as well, that are additional areas. I did not hear him propose that the other areas that are in hatched areas are fine to develop. What I heard him say is there are addition, additional areas. But I think what Councilmember Lipton asked to help, uh, him coalesce around his thinking was that people could identify areas that are within our, uh, responsibility as council members, uh, to protect or identify as required open space. So going back to sort of those, uh, five factors, topography, drainage, vegetation, and physical conditions, anticipated socioeconomic conditions, type and density of development and employment, overall need for open space and recreational facilities. Directors Akara, maybe you want to put that slide back up that has all of those on it? Uh, seeing, I'm just trying to see if I missed any others. So I think what Councilmember Lipton was just asking is, are there areas on there that folks are going to meet, that identify as needed to meet these factors that open space, uh, could be required for?
So in, in general, I, I like the continuity of the spaces and how they're connected. Um, I like that the pond is encircled with open space in their concept, of course, and that being the hash marks, depending on other things that happen in the future. Um, but in general, I like, I like that it isn't broken up into lots of different smaller spaces that aren't usable. I like that it's continuous. I like it that it's on the north side. I like that it runs from west to east or east to west. Um, so all those parts I like. Um, were I to change one thing with a magic marker, I would just, I would decrease the quantity of the hash marks on the west side of A and increase the. of the hash marks on the west side of A and increase the quantity of hash marks on the east side of C three. And that would be like my, my shift of what already exists. If we're talking about adding more than what's already being proposed, then it would be adding it to C three without taking it away from something else. So I, I'm just, I guess, I think that's clear enough where I am. What I don't understand is, is necessarily what we're, what we're potentially proposing or asking of the, of the applicant, are we asking them to do more or to change where they're doing it? But, but in general, I like the area. I like the, the spot and I like the continuity.
Other council members? It looks like that's all the input you'll get, Councilmember Lipton, on your question. So back to you.
So, so I guess one additional question or one suggestion that was made is perhaps shifting into to, to allow C three to become open spaces, shifting density or development potential to other parcels. I do recall, as I was on planning commission during the Conoco Phillips PUDs, that we did like having the taller buildings. In fact, there was one that was, what, eight stories? And we put that at the lowest point in the site, in the site in order to reduce the, the view impacts. Now, I'm not suggesting we do eight story buildings, but if there's room for additional, you know, perhaps four story buildings in some of the other parcels to make up for the loss of development potential in C three, I would certainly be amenable to having that conversation. And I hope the rest of you might also consider that too.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. And, you know, I really appreciate Mayor Proton Maloney laying out that maybe there's not that much difference between us, but I'm just having a hard time with this conversation, kind of understanding where people are trying to go. So I'm, on one hand, trying to facilitate our discussion to get us to move along through this. And on the other hand, I'm participating in the discussion as, as one of the seven members of City Council. And so my, my next comments are in my participatory role and then I'll go back to trying to facilitate us moving forward. But when I look at this list that's on the screen and I think about all of the things that the residents wrote us letters about, about climate change and the value of this property for wildlife and the habitat that exists there and the socioeconomic realities of what climate change is going to bring to us. And that if we really did an integrated development that had meaningful open space, that it would be more valuable to the developer and that the people who ultimately have their jobs there would have greater enjoyment with the connection between nature and their facility and how they interact with it. So when I look at this list, it's hard for me to stay in my seat and not just have everyone say like, yes, everything above Disk Drive should obviously be open space. Like it just seems so obvious to me that everything above Disk Drive should be open space and that that would more meaningfully address these requirements than picking off a little here and there and then running a four lane highway through it. So as the participator in this process, it's just, I'm having a hard time hearing what everyone's saying and hearing what I'm thinking. So I might not be hearing you all correctly, but I just feel like it seems like there's an overall need for open space and recreational facilities on this site because of the sheer mass of the impact of the site itself on the climate and the community and the trips and the wildlife and everything, the drainage, everything. So it seems that we need to preserve the area that will allow for the view corridor to be preserved, that if you're standing, you know, on Rock Creek Trail on your bike and you're looking west, that you can still see the mountains. And if we don't preserve that corridor, that won't be true. So I guess my proposal would be to include all of the space above Disk Drive as open space in the general development plan. Councilmember Brown? And now I'll go back to facilitating. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Yes, I wanted to respond to Councilmember Dickinson's question about are we asking them to add more versus just shuffle, shuffling open space around? And I wanted to make it clear that I'm definitely in favor of asking the developer to add more. I agree, Mayor, with your comments about the, the, the space above this drive. And if it were up to me, I would also be in favor of preserving the entirety of the property north of this drive in, if for no other reason than it is historically has been preserved and, or undeveloped, I should say. So I think those are, those are good reasons to preserve that area. And what is, that is the high quality open space that I'm looking for in terms of, in terms of mitigating all of the other effects that you mentioned in terms of climate, traffic and trips and everything else.
Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, thanks. I, I had, I guess, one question of, of the mayor on which, what you were just talking about. Let's, let's assume for a second that based on the, the PUD, Public Land Dedication, that everything above Disk Drive were open space? Just for sake of argument, you, you did mention your concern about, I, I think you said running a four lane highway through it. Is, is your concern that there's any kind of roadway at all through there or is it just the width?
So it's a little bit of both. So if you look in the application materials or in the packet materials as prepared by staff, there's the Conoco Phillips PUD that was in there and the roadway is in just a different location. And so it doesn't cut so much through the property. If there was some way to underground the road and just have the wildlife go over it, that would be preferred, but I recognize that that's not, you know, feasible.
Underpass, if you will?
Yeah, a big, a big road underpass to get out. But I understand that's not feasible and that people do need to be allowed access to their property in a reason, there are these balances. I think Mayor Proton Maloney brings up balance a lot of times and, you know, how to, how do you deal with these trade offs? So I think looking at locating the road more similarly to how Conoco Phillips proposed it to go, you know, further to the west and then out and exit further to the north, it doesn't bisect the open space quite so much. So when Councilmember Dickinson was talking about how the open space all connects and is together, when I look at the picture, I see open space bisected by a bunch of roads. It doesn't, so when I think about which paths are most enjoyable around town, it's not the ones next to a four, four lane road. So, you know, people just would prefer to be on the ones that are not next to that kind of a, to a facility. And so the more we can separate those two uses, the more meaningful, I think, the open space experience then remains.
Thank you. That, that helps, Mayor. These, these factors, of course, are, and I appreciate, Mayor, your nesting, your discussion to those factors. That's what we've been trying to do and, and I think you made a, a good case certainly for more open space. What is, I, I guess my, one of my questions is, is can you, Directors of Care, put a, put the whole or the, like a picture or the, the aerial view of the whole property up there, if you would? Yeah, that's, that's helpful. Because I'm looking at that and I'm saying, you know, one of the things that I think is kind of, it's a, it's a question that I think was raised before and I'm going to ask it of the city attorney. Notwithstanding a compelling argument that the mayor just made about this, when, when does our need for open space and our reliance on these other factors, but particularly, you know, our need for open space turn into, or potentially turn into a taking? If, let, let's just assume for a second that that entire, because that's kind of what we've been talking about, that entire part north of just drive becomes open space. Let's assume that for just a minute. I, I think the way the mayor framed it, it's consistent with those, those factors in seventeen twenty-eight eighty. But is there, is there any other counterbeating principle or, or rule that prevents us, including constitutional, that would prevent us or, or would create any kind of sizable risk of a taking? And that's for, I think that would be for our city attorney.
City Attorney Kelly?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lay, that's quite a complicated question that you've asked and one that frankly, I would feel more comfortable providing some advice to the city council in a confidential forum rather than in an open meeting. I think it's a good question and a good thought to pursue and I can certainly do that in follow up to this hearing tonight or to this meeting.
I, I, and I appreciate that. And, you know, this is, I've, I've got to point out one concern that I have, our charter has a very, a lot of limitations, great limitations on the extent to which council can kind of shield itself and its deliberations from public view based on, you know, seeking attorney client or confidential discussions. This is one of those areas, as I'm hearing it, that makes it really difficult. And I don't know whether, it, it sounds like, just again, to be very clear, that what, what I understand you to just say, city attorney, is that you would, you could put together confidential memorandum for distribution, but the council could not outside or could not within an executive session consider that. We'd have to consider the impact of that either without talking about it or talking about your memo in open meeting. Is that, is that fair? I want to make sure that I understand kind of what the implications of all this are.
That is fair, Councilmember Lay, and I should have been more specific and said that, that, that is how I would envision the follow up would be a confidential attorney client privileged memorandum. You've correctly referenced the limitations in the charter and we would not be able to have a discussion about this in executive session because of those charter limitations. And if the council were to discuss a confidential attorney client memorandum in a public meeting, then that would waive the privilege and it would no longer be confidential. So there are significant limitations on my ability to, to give legal advice in this process.
It's just, it's unfortunate because this is a really, it'd be a useful thing. I think the mayor raises good issues of trying to, based on the criteria that we have to apply, expanding the, the scope of the, of the open space that clearly our residents want. I think it is absolutely clear that they want more open space in there. But yeah, and I appreciate it. That's, that's, that's all I've got for the moment.
Councilmember Lay, and I, I can't weigh into any of the legal discussion that you brought up, but, you know, between you attorneys, but I just, from my perspective, I kind of was looking at my comments a little differently than yours and I do appreciate your question. But I sort of look at the flip side of that, that the council has no obligation to upzone a property either. And so if, you know, previously it was zone for storage tech and a single tenant office building, as was envisioned, that there would be a single tenant for this site, that, you know, there's no obligation to add additional density beyond what was allowed that would then take up the whole property. So I mean, that's sort of the flip side of it is like we are not required to grant additional entitlements to add value to the property either. There's an underlying zoning and there's, you know, what they're entitled. And I, in no way was trying to propose taking away anyone's entitled allowance. So just to clarify.
And Mayor, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that's what you're doing either. I, you're absolutely right. That's a really important consideration and it goes to the, you know, the 2.5 versus the 3.1 that's being asked for. I'm just, I'm interested because obviously what we want to be able to do is to have our decisions be sustainable no matter what. It's only, we may be, in some ways, my question may be just sort of putting the cart before the horse because we haven't dealt with the other, with that, with that issue of, that you're kind of referring to. So maybe I, maybe it's a little bit premature.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I also, not being a lawyer, can't speak to the legal arguments, but I would just sort of point out, I think, for folks watching at home, especially that, that us, a dedication, a public land dedication of this size would not be without precedent. And precedent is certainly very important in legal proceedings. So just the chart that Rob showed earlier showed that there have been very significant land dedications for similar developments in, in Louisville. So I think that's worth mentioning because, you know, precedent is important here.
So maybe we move on to discuss transportation. I'm just, I'm not sure that we actually resolved the open space differences or how, how to move forward. And I think part of that is going back to Directors of Care's advice that, you know, on one hand, we just are responding to an application, but on the other hand, in the vein that Mayor Proton Maloney and Councilwoman Ellipton were looking at it, like, is there a way to come together around this with something that can be beneficial for the community and, and meets the requirements that is needed by the applicant and everything like that? So do folks feel that staying on this open space topic is, will be fruitful and will be able to reach resolution or should we move on to a new topic? Councilmember Brown?
I think we can move on, Mayor. That would be my preference. I think it, it seems like we have some folks, we, we need to digest this open space conversation. It might be good to talk about something else for a little while.
All right. And so another topic, Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I, I may have a slightly different approach to that, only that, that I think the open space discussion is something that is going to be, you know, it's going to be seeping through many of these points that we're going to be raising. So without suggesting that we need to keep talking about and keep talking about it, I don't know that I would say it's as discreet as, as all of that. So I, anyway, I'm, I'm going, I'm fine moving on. I'm just saying.
Thank, that's great. No, that's useful feedback, Councilmember Lay. And so maybe we'll turn to our planning director and sort of get some advice from Directors of Care. I mean, maybe this is, this is a point to ask the applicant to weigh in. Maybe this is a point to ask for public feedback. I, I would hate to take our public comment before having the whole discussion from council because then they wouldn't have the benefit of hearing about transportation and things like that and then weighing in on what we say about those other topics. But maybe this is such a pivotal topic to the whole decision that maybe we need to come up with a plan. So Directors of Care, do you have any advice for us on how to proceed through?
You know, I, I think it's up to council how they want to proceed. I do think that it would be helpful to, to have the applicant engage with council at some point to discuss those options. But I, but I think you could also, I mean, I think it's up to council what they feel is the best path forward, really. You know, I think you could also certainly talk about traffic and get those questions out of the way and come back to open space and then engage the applicant at that time if, if that helps move the conversation along.
Thank you, Directors of Care. Councilmember Lipton?
Yes, thank you. I, I do have one, one comment about the table. I think Councilmember Brown said, you know, using that as pres, as precedence for, you know, asking for such a large land dedication. I would point out that the largest land dedications that are included on that table included a sizable amount for residential and we stripped residential out of this, this general development plan. But I think the reason that you have large amounts in some of these other developments is because they did include residential. I think even by our code, residential requires higher land dedications than commercial. So, you know, I understand your comment about precedence, but I think you got to look a little deeper in the numbers and why the numbers are what they are.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. I appreciate your comments. Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. I appreciate your comments. Mayor, I, I also would just, I think it's important to, I think the context here is, is, is still important. I also would like to point out that the council did not strip residential out of this proposal. The applicant did. We sent it back to planning. So, you know, obviously that was their decision to come back with this particular proposal.
Well, we clearly signaled, Councilmember Brown, that we were unhappy with the residential that was included last year when it was provided to us. So, you know, I mean,
I'm sorry, you're interrupting me, Councilmember Lipton.
I was just, let me just, sorry to interrupt you both. I'm just, was going to say, if you, everybody can just wait till I call in people to go, just so that it doesn't get into a back and forth and
I'm sorry, I thought he was finished.
Yeah, thank you. In the future, I'll make sure that I am called upon by the mayor. Yeah, I, I think that the, it's important that we, that dedications are dedications, and whether or not we talk about them in the residential context or not, there's still large dedications. I also think it is important that we, that we recognize that this was, that the council took no action on the previous application and that we sent it back to the planning committee.
Thank you. And Councilmember Dickinson, I thought I saw your hand for a minute, but.
Sure, sorry, I, I just, yeah, I think, I think, I think a year ago, it was awkward because it came before us and there was a public hearing and then a break and then the applicant changed their tune before we ever really got to make serious comments. So it was, it was an awkward moment last year, and I think that points to this awkward conversation of, did we give direction, the public give direction? Did the, did the applicant just change their direction on their own? But, you know, I do think that we do have to weigh those pros and cons of, you know, if we, if we want more dedication, we might want more residential. And I think that the public made it very clear a year ago that, that they didn't want more residential and the applicant came back in response to that with less residential but less dedication. And so, you know, I, I'm torn on those things as well. And we didn't get to weigh in last year. All we get to weigh in now is on, is on this one, and then is mostly commercial and industrial and a little bit of retail and no residential. And so I do think we need to compare as best we can apples to apples of dedications previously, and even this space dedications made when it was, when it was turned into a commercial area originally. So it's already, it's already gone through this process more than one time. And so, you know, that, we're looking at what we're looking at now, and we're not comparing it to other oranges, if you will. But that's, that's all I'll say on that.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Fahey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My, my feeling after listening to all of these different comments is that, as was mentioned, they have come back with their second proposal that was significantly better than their first one, in my opinion. We're requesting more than is what, what's required when it comes to open space. And in order for us to do that with the, I guess, a clear conscience, I think we would need to give them some kind of concession in some other area, either in height variance or, or something to make it worth their while and thank them for making the concessions that they've already made. And so I would, I would go with larger open space dedications if we're willing to give them a height restriction or variance or something like that in exchange.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. So it, I, I guess I'll just respectfully disagree. I mean, there certainly is a waiver process that requires more open space dedication through the waiver process, so I don't quarrel with that. But it's pretty clear from our code that the council is responsible to identify the areas that are needed for open space for the community. So I, you know, I, I believe that I'm trying my best to represent the code and I have a clear conscience when I represent the code and bring forward proposals that are within, you know, within what we're required to do. So I guess that's the part I'm reacting to is the clear conscience part because I'm trying my very best to follow our regulations and apply them fairly. I do think this would be a good time to ask the, I mean, the applicants heard what we've all said about open space. I don't think there's consensus. I don't think it's clear where we're going. But I wonder if a representative from the development would like to make any comments around this discussion on open space or anything related to the open space discussion. Mr. Bacall.
Thank you, Mayor Sulzman. Yeah, absolutely. We're, we're obviously in attendance and listening and, and trying to, to follow very closely and quickly with, with what's happening real time. I would tell you, I think there's a willingness to attempt to balance and address some of the concerns in terms of quality of open space in particular. And so so there's a willingness to have that discussion, absolutely. And so to me, it's a little bit holistic, so it's difficult to, to comment too far in a vacuum. That's as I think Councilmember Lay mentioned, that this will be intertwined through other parts of the conversation. So so we do have some other comments and we have prepared, I think, Directors Zakaro, we have an opportunity to speak at some point, so we could go through that. But I don't want to jump the gun on that. If we're not ready, it's really just clarifications from the last meeting from questions previously.
The, and you absolutely do. The plan was to go through council questions and comments, which we haven't quite finished through, and then take additional public comments. And then that would give you, right after the additional public comments, you would have an opportunity to give additional applicant comments. That way you could have heard the collective, a whole discussion in case there were things that you wanted to respond to. So that's had you in the queue, but if you wanted to go in a different order, we can
That makes, that makes sense. We're okay with that.
Okay. And so, thank you, Mr. Bacall, for the response on that. And so I think with, oh, Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So this is, I think, directed to you. If you can help me understand, because, because you have a better understanding of a lot of this than I do. When we're tasked as council to decide where the open space is most needed or where, you know, it, that I guess that was to my previous question is, you know, are we saying that the northwest quadrant isn't as important as the pond quadrant? So if they're required to do 12% or 15%, and, and, and they're, and they're going to be held to a minimum, we can say, well, within that minimum, it's more important that you protect this pond than you protect the area near the high school. Or it's more important that you protect the north end than the south end. And, but not, and not we require you to go beyond 12% to protect more of the pond. Is it, is it beholden of us to say, well, 12% is 12%, but we prefer it to be somewhere else than where it is? Or are we actually in a position to say, well, we like everything you've done, but we need more here, which I guess brings you to 20%? But, but we're asking for more here without subtracting somewhere else. Do we, is it within our, in our purview to, to do that? Or is it just assigning the location?
So I, I think this, I think you've asked a good question for Directors Zakaro to follow up, but I tried to lay out my thinking around this last time and I'll try again. And then Directors Zakaro, please let us know what your thoughts are on this and bring up any slides you need to. But the, the way that I look at it is that the code would say a development is required to provide a 12% dedication, if that's what was required. But the code says that, that, that an applicant is required to provide a minimum of 12%. And it also goes on to say that the council has to identify the areas where there are public facilities that they're needed, where there's recreational amenities that there are needed, where view corridors are preserved. So I look at it the flip way. Where are those things required? And for example, there was a housing development once that, you know, they, they had to do their housing dedication that had never been planted, never been subdivided. But there was nothing on the property that had any public value. It just didn't make any sense for us to maintain and to care for property in that area. So in that case, it's like, all right, we don't want any of this. This has no functional use. There's no public purpose for this. There's no habitat. There's no corridor. There's nothing. And so you're required to pay a fee in lieu of 15% because there's nothing for you to dedicate. So in this, in this case, I'm sort of looking at it saying, well, where are the things that are important to meet these requirements of our code? And identify them all and then do the math. And if it's less than 12%, then there's an additional fee in lieu that's needed to make up that difference, to get to that minimum of 12%. And if it's over 12%, then the requirement is satisfied. So that's how I'm looking at it, which is different than how you described sort of leading in. And Directors Zakaro, please feel free.
Well, right. And so I guess the question is, could the applicant satisfy you and therefore potentially council by saying, okay, we see the importance of the pond. We're going to shift our, because we're not, I haven't heard conversation. Maybe it's just assumed that like, oh my, oh my goodness, all the other things that they're dedicating are important and essential and we really, really value. There's nothing we don't value that they've already proposed. And so there can be no subtraction. There can only be addition. But I haven't heard from anyone that, that, for instance, the hash marks on the west side of A, I haven't heard anyone argue why those, that particular area is of great use or how it would be used. So my thought was, oh, we'll move that area to C3, and that's a shift of the same asset, but in a better place, which seems like what's being asked of us is to say, ooh, no, 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 that area is less important than this area. Please do more around the pond and less around the west side of A. But it, but it sounds like you're asking to do both, to, to keep A and to add to the pond. And that's what we need to react to and to try to get to, you know, closure with each other to send direction to, to staff and to the applicant and of course, get to a vote. So, so I think I have a better understanding and just again, trying to understand our, our role and our job of, of determining what has to be done or what we want to be done. But I think, I think I get a better sense of it. Thank you.
Yeah. And I, I'm happy to talk about each piece, each component and how it weaves in. But there are other requirements for the view shed. I mean, I think it's an obvious one where if you, you know, just go a little bit west and then build a 10-story building there, then you still can't see if it's all the way across, right? So the view shed is a big one for the connectivity piece and the water corridor, whatever we want to call it. We've now called it like a channel, a floodway. We've called it all kinds of things. I think it's none of those things. I think drainage way maybe, but that water corridor and the importance that that connects to wildlife. And I can go, I can try to pull it quickly, but the open space comments about maintaining trees on the property. And then the staff followed up in our packet this time with a diagram showing where the trees are located and they're on the properties that are being proposed in addition to some that I'm requesting that we would add. So I was not proposing subtracting anything in my comments. Any other comments on this topic? All right. So we will take our five-minute break. It's 8:23. And so we'll take a brief recess and be back at 8:28. As soon as we can, all the council members back on screen, we'll get started again. All right. And it looks like Directors Zakaro, so we're back from our recess at 8:29. And Director Zakaro has some comments for us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to address the question I think has come up a couple of times about interconnectedness of some of these topics in relation to open space. And it made me really think about the density question of the 3.1 million square feet that's being requested as a development cap. I think that does influence the open space proposal, depending on how city council feels about that issue as well as this clustering issue. You know, I think as staffs work with the applicant, oh, you know, over time, they have provided conceptual plans. And again, these are just conceptual. But they're, they're trying, they've showed us what matches a market analysis that shows a mix between industrial and office development. And if you apply your design standards, you know, showing a certain amount And if you apply your design standards, um, you know, showing a certain amount of industrial development, which is typically one story. You know, it spreads out over the property quite a bit more than if you're doing two and three or even four and five story development. So, eh, you know, trying to mix market supported uses with, you know, what's allowed under our comprehensive plan policy, which are, you know, the commercial, the office, the residential, I'm sorry, the commercial, the office and the industrial. You know, I, I think there, it does take up a large area of land at three point one million square feet. Um, you know, certainly understanding whether clustering or taller buildings could be preferred in exchange for open space. But if council's okay with the overall density, for example, that could really influence how these different concepts interact around the open space. So I think the question about the interconnectivity of some of these other policy issues that you're discussing, it may be worth um, you know, talking about those and seeing your comfort level on some of those other policies around height and density, because that can influence open space. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out there because there have been a couple of questions about that. And I, I did want to mention too that, um, you know, the, the applicant provided some information about how the open space proposal was developed, so that was in the packet as well. I do think they thought they were going to be able to describe that in some detail. So I think whenever that occurs, if that's after the public comment, um, I think the applicant, just, just to let council know the applicant did want to talk to that issue at some point. But that's up to the discretion of council on, on how you, uh, at what point in the meeting that takes place.
Great, thanks Director Zakaria. Um, so I, I guess I have one question based on what you just said. So I had, um, from last time you had a slide that showed a number of things that we were required to cover for the general development plan. So I was working through that list you provided us, so. Location of parks, open space and recreation was on there. Um, and, uh, the next one I think we were going to talk about is transportation, which is the location type and character of streets. Um, and I have on here the type and character of development. So maybe that's the category that you're putting height within.
Right, and I think, yes, this is one of the, um, you know, one of the things about our general development plan zoning criteria is it does specifically ask that type and character of development be described within the general development plan. Um, but then there's also a section within the code that says the underlying, um, you know, setback and height standards, what we call Balkan yard standards, um, must generally comply with, you know, whatever the equivalent underlying zoning is. So if this is office and industrial, you should be in general compliance with those underlying zoning standards. Um, so, uh, you know, I, I think this type and character of development question, you know, the way the code is written, it can't be overly specific about height and setback that needs to be determined. If it's not complying with underlying zoning, that has to be determined through P U D. I think we're attempting to set up some intent of possibility based on comp plan policy, because that's what happened with ConocoPhillips as well. They, um, you know, this, that previous general development plan um, had a desire and they had, they had a description in their general development plan, but it was only with the preliminary P U D that council could actually approve those height waivers with ConocoPhillips.
Thank you for that clarification. So, um, just when, so when we get to that point, you might need to, we might need a refresher on that again. Uh, but I appreciate that clarification. And so the next topic I think for discussion is, uh, the location type and character of streets. Any, anybody have comments or questions for our transportation staff around the transportation study or any other of the type, location and character of streets? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I, I have a few questions about it. It seems, it seems to me that the, the transportation study that was done recommends a number of improvements. And I believe that the improvements, many of those improvements are actually not on the property itself. Um, and so in, in particular, there are improvements, I believe, to Dillon and to Ninety-Fifth. Um, and so I'm, I'm curious as to what the, you know, what the applicant or, well, what, first, let's start with Director Zakaria. Um, you know, what, what are the, the recommendations, um, you know, in following the recommendations of that study, it would seem like that's a, would require a significant overlay of funding um, by, by the council in order to meet those recommendations, so in order to accommodate the, the development. Is that, is that right? Or am I misreading that study?
Right, so, he, so I don't know if, I put up the new screen here. I don't know if you can see the summary of improvements or if I have to reshare.
I think you have to reshare, we're still seeing the, um, thanks.
Okay, so here's a summary of improvements from the traffic study. Um, so what you'll see, if this is approved, you'll see a final plat with the subdivision improvement agreement that outlines the developer, you know, what the developer is building for public infrastructure. So we haven't really discussed in full, um, you know, off-site costs. Um, you know, as, I think as staff sees the Ninety-Sixth Street improvements, um, so there's intersection improvements and there's different years that we would anticipate those would be triggered. Um, but it includes, um, you know, some improvements in Brumfield and some improvements in Lewisville, including widening of Ninety-Sixth Street, improvements to the Dillon and Ninety-Sixth Street. Um, intersection as far as off-site improvements. Um, you know, in, in outer years that, you know, the city doesn't have any plans for expanding Ninety-Sixth Street to four lanes. Um, applicants provided some information that shows background traffic um, would probably warrant that at some point in the future, but it's not in any of our capital plans. So this project would, you know, the city could choose to keep it at a constrained roadway, certainly. We might make improvements in the future, we certainly don't have any plans. This development would certainly hasten the need from a, you know, a, a standard traffic policy standpoint where you would typically start to consider expanding roads, you know, it would become earlier with this pro- project. So I think there's some, you know, I think typically that would come a final plat. I think staff expects that but for this project, you know, some of these expansions aren't in our plans or wouldn't take place. So there may need to be at the very least a contribution if not, um, you know, covering that expansion from the developer, but those negotiations typically take place at final plat. If the city council felt it was important to determine, you know, whether they were comfortable, I think we could have further discussion with the applicant. We just haven't fully vetted cost share versus full um, contribution for that expansion at this time. So I think we'd need more time or the, or ask the applicant what their intent is for that.
Thank you, Director. So it, it is your intention to have conversations about um, the applicant, at least partially, if not fully funding some of those improvements.
Yeah, um, yes. That would be correct. At final plat, there would be a proposal for how those are funded with the subdivision improvement agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. While this slide is still up, this is one of the things on, on my list of questions is around this. And I guess I just have some more questions for our public works staff if they're on. Um, so, uh, Directors of Co are kind of mentioned that like our constrained network, you, you know, we might want to leave it that way. Can, can you talk at all, um, Director Coer about, you know, what our current plans are for these intersections? And then if we were, let's say that this development wasn't in play, that things were just, um, business as usual and there was nothing being proposed here. Would you recommend these types of expansions like their traffic engineer did or would that induce demand? And what would that do given that this is directly adjacent to a tollway?
Sure, I'm happy to take that question. This is Kirk Coer, Director of Public Works and Utilities. So, as has been stated previously, we do not have these areas in any future planning, nor has it been placed in our transportation master plan. Just for reasons that, because of the character of the community in that area and how the area functions now, which is satisfactory despite that it is busy. Um, we don't feel a need to make that level of investment. We feel the, we do have other regional corridors there such as Northwest Parkway that are built to take that regional traffic. And so we have made a purposeful decision not to look to expanding those areas in the near future or the long-term future at this point.
Thank you. And so my next question is on the, on the report that was in the packet. When it talks about some of the other improvements and, and requirements, so like, for example, it shows the campus drive connection coming out onto Ninety-Sixth Street. Does that assume that those other uh, changes have been made? So does that assume that Ninety-Sixth Street is wide enough to take that volume? With that connection?
Yes, it is assumed that if campus drive comes out to Ninety-Sixth, Ninety-Sixth will need to be signalized and widened to to accommodate the amount of, and types of lanes to move traffic through that area. One of the reasons that area works well now is because it does not have a lot of side access to it. And so it is really, uh, efficient in moving north-south traffic, satisfactory. And the minute you put a signal into that area, it's going to change those dynamics.
And, and so looking at the backing up onto Ninety-Sixth Street, when the study was done, does it look at the fact that there's a fire station there and people can't block the fire station driveway?
At this point, no study has gone in depth to go into the details to that level. So it does not take into account how queues might affect fire station access ingress egress. Uh, and those are things that would typically be vetted out at a civil engineering drawing detail level. So in a sense, you might be able to work some of those things out through the buy-off with all those stakeholders and civil engineering plans that would show adequate improvements. But the developer is also at risk that those, uh, types of things may not be able to be worked out. And so some of these things may not be functional.
In the previous plan that was approved by council, it had the campus drive connection moving further to the north. So those signals weren't so stacked up upon each other. I mean, would that, would that have any impact or bearing on whether or not the road needed to be four lanes first? And then second, would that have any impact on the signal timing on both Dillon Road and Northwest Parkway?
I think in all these cases, once you look at the size of the intersections needed and how lanes taper in and taper out to blend with other intersections, uh, I don't think where the intersections is placed has a huge impact on how wide Ninety-Sixth needs to be. Uh, but if the intersection was placed further north, such as Paradise Lane, uh, then you would reduce queue impacts on the existing fire station and possibly on Northwest Parkway.
And then I guess this question might be for Directors of Care out. My understanding is that there's a little bit of development potential on the parcel uh, in Brumfield County to the, yeah, right there. Thank you for hammering over. Thank you for reading my mind. Um, and so do we have any visibility into where their access might come out?
Um, yeah, their, their plan was to align access with Paradise Lane across the street. So it, it, it was a smaller residential development, kind of a clustered residential development, the last plan I saw with alignment of a access drive with Paradise.
Thank you. And just back to Director Coer, so with, with the increased volume that we would expect from this project and the background traffic, would you expect those two neighborhoods, the existing Paradise Lane and the future Paradise Lane neighborhood, would need a signal to be able to get out in the future?
It's highly possible that they would have what we call a level of service issue and need some assistance to get out at peak periods.
Thank you. So I mean, I, in this area, I mean, that, I, I think it's problematic to not think about how these new connections will impact traffic and stacking and the other roads. And we've seen in some of the other developments that have been improved that it creates a nightmare for our future council to solve. So I think spending some time looking at this and thinking about where this access needs to go to minimize the number of issues and conflicts is really important. And it, it looks like from the traffic report that a better location for campus drive is to align it with Paradise Lane, to push it back out of the intersection, back away from the fire station and align it with the other access points that are going to need to exist and already exist. So that's just something I think is worth flagging. Um, also just on this type and character of street issue, um, there's been a lot of work in our transportation master plan and regionally around load diets and right sizing streets and not inducing demand and more greenhouse gas emissions. So it does concern me to see four lane roads in the development instead of looking to, uh, you know, it, it looked like there was a nice, uh, transportation management plan that the applicant had put forward and that they're planning on doing busing and some other things. And there's good access to transit in this location, especially if the development pushes as far to the south and as far to the east as they possibly can, then it can connect up with the underpass that connects to the bus station. So I just think that we, I, I don't think that four lane roads fit the character of a rural development. And in our comprehensive plan, this is a rural development. Uh, it, it just seems like having these four lane roads, I know they're just sections of the road that are four lane roads, but nonetheless, like we've had to spend, I don't want to, I don't want to over, we've had to spend quite a lot of community money to make the roads more pedestrian friendly and right sized and not just in residential areas. We, we've had to do it in the business park. Uh, we're looking at more pedestrian improvements in the industrial park. We're looking at a trail in the industrial park and in lots of places, we have these wide multi-lane facilities. And it's just, it's an old fashioned way of looking at things. And so I think we need to provide the feedback that the four lane roads are out of character with the rural designation and that the location of campus drive creates a long-term issue with stacking and a problem and it needs to be aligned with Paradise Lane. And then my last comment is just, uh, Councilman LeBron kind of flagged this for me with his line of questions. I think we just need to make it clear that these off-site improvements are not required but for this development. So it would be our expectation that they're paid for by the development. Councilmember Dickinson?
Um, yeah, I totally agree that I would love campus drive to be farther north. And I think that was the original design said like the applicant at some point explained why they moved it south, because I think, I think originally they had it north. Um, and I think there's an easement issue or something, so I'd like to understand that. My, my understanding is that Eighty-Eighth is all four lane. And I, I don't drive that area very often, but I, I feel like Eighty-Eighth is four lane. Um, is it not? Is it only?
Director Zakaria?
Sure, yeah, Eighty-Eighth is two lane, um, on the Lewisville side. It, it's not four lane. I think Superior has recently widened the road, but I, I don't know if it's striped as four lane yet or just widened to accommodate four lane.
It's still striped as two lane, but it's
It's two, yeah.
Okay, so there's only, there's only one lane running south on Eighty-Eighth currently. Okay. Yeah, that's funny. I, I, again, I clearly don't drive there often enough. I, I feel like it's a two lane road, um, one, one direction. So, um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess the only, the only thing I would challenge in the end that you said, Mayor, was that none of this is required without, but for the development. And I, and I feel like campus drive is something that our residents are asking for. Regardless of the development, that we really want campus drive and that that's a huge benefit of this development is that it will potentially bring us, um, a connection, campus drive east. Um, so not, not saying that I don't want them to, uh, pay for it, develop it, create these underpasses, all those, all those wonderful things, but it does, it does feel like the east-west campus drive is of great value to our community regardless of the Redtail Ridge development. But that's, otherwise I agree with everything you said.
Other comments on the transportation section or questions for the transportation folks? Okay. Uh, so going back to Rob's slide, um, the type and character of development was the next category. Any comments or questions on type and character of development? Any comments or questions on type and character of development? Councilmember Ben?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I, I wanted to ask, I'm not aware of any development in Louisville that exceeds three stories, but maybe Rob can refresh my memory if that's incorrect.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. I am not aware of anything above three stories.
Okay. And that, and that is also what's written into the comprehensive plan. Is that, is that also correct?
So the comprehensive, so the comprehensive plan does suggest that within the rural districts, that you, the city council can consider above three stories if the development is clustered and there's consideration of view corridors and things like that. That's, that was in the supplemental memo. That policy is in there. So if you open that up.
Right. So while, so I think what you're saying, Director, is that, you know, while it's consistent, while there's nothing in Louisville currently that's above three stories, it is potential that we could consider something above three stories within this area.
Yes, as, as far as comprehensive plan policy in the rural special districts is where that could be appropriate.
Got it.
Including this property.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other camp, council members have comments on type and character of development or questions? All right, any other comments or questions from council members? All right, so next we have our final public comment period on this hearing. And so if any members of the public would care to comment, please raise your hand at this time. If you've dialed in by phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. And just please be patient. There are seventy-one folks on right now. So just raise your hand and leave it up, please, and then we'll get through everybody. And each person will have three minutes for their comments. And at the beginning of your comments, if you'll please tell us your name and address, that would be useful for the public record. And please be respectful of the timer with the three minutes. There'll be a timer that's on the screen. And since we have so many folks, it helps if everybody kind of keeps a watch on that so they know when their comments will be coming to an end and I will have to cut people off if they run over. So the first commenter this evening is RJ Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Council, for some seriously solid deliberations. RJ Harrington, your neighbor at four-five-seven East Rain Tree Court. I'm going to use some of the language that I've been hearing this evening. And one of the pieces that I don't believe is fungible is that eliminating fossils from our economy is becoming more critical. The toxins in our air that we can see and taste today, when there are wildfires, is evidence of our air quality without those fires, thanks to the fossil gas frac fields to our northeast and east. Lots of debate on a variety of different topics this evening. Most of my comments during the planning commission process were focused on fossil gas, and those comments will continue this evening. I got a chance to read through the eight hundred pages that are provided for tonight's meeting, and I see very minimal discussion, although a lot of good background on the beneficial electrification process. But I did tease out some continuing focus on processed gas and exemptions there, too. So the applicant seems to be continually committed to additional fossil gas infrastructure for processed gas, despite some dedications to building electrification. So ultimately, the question becomes is, will our community make a difference between catastrophe and apocalypse? I referenced IPCC six earlier this evening. If our codes aren't strong enough and the action taken on the Atkins GDP proposal must wait for future PUDs and plattings, et cetera, the mayor said it's a nightmare for the future council to solve. Now, it wasn't specific to this particular reference, but the nightmare context is appreciated. So if we have to wait, the answer to the question if our community will make a difference between catastrophe and apocalypse is clear. The American Institute of Biological Scientists has fifteen thousand scientists that have discussed the moral obligation for our species to declare a climate emergency. Two thousand jurisdictions in thirty-four countries have declared or recognized the climate emergency. And so I'll finish with a final word from that organization. On the basis of recent trends and planetary vital signs, we must reaffirm the climate emergency declaration and again call for transformative change, which is needed now more than ever to protect life on Earth. Thank you.
Mayor, you were muted there, so if you want to call on that person again. Sorry about that. The next commenter we have this evening is Graham.
Thank you, Mayor. Am I unmuted? Could someone please confirm?
Yes, you are.
Thank you very much. My name is Graham Davis. I live at twelve-thirty Judson Drive in Boulder, Colorado. I don't live in Louisville, but I frequent Louisville. I play golf a lot at the Coal Creek Golf Course and have friends in Louisville that we visit, and I certainly enjoy downtown Louisville. I'm an economist by training, PhD economist. I've taught economics at university for twenty-five years. And I have three suggestions for you really tonight, more than comments. The first is that I have not seen any documentation that provides a rigorous economic study of the development. I've seen the fiscal impact study, but I've not seen an economic analysis. And economic analyses are important because they, they reveal knock-on or follow-on effects from a development. And in particular, they'll show unintended consequences and who the winners and losers are from such developments. So just as an example, I think it's fairly certain that this development, if it goes forward, will inflate house prices or raise house prices in Louisville City. And that is both positive and negative. It's positive because most of people's net wealth is tied up in housing. And so I noticed all of you tonight are probably in your homes. And if you own your home, you're going to benefit from the appreciation of the home. But that also raises property taxes. And there are retirees who will be burdened by higher taxes on their homes while they're trying to live there. And it may cause an exodus of people from the city who can't afford the higher taxes. So an economic study is important, and I haven't seen it, so I encourage you to pursue that if you haven't done already. The second thing is the fiscal analysis I found severely lacking. I, I'm sure you're budget constrained, but there was no analysis of risks in there. For example, what I saw was revenues projected to exceed costs, but no analysis of how those revenues vary through business cycles and how those costs vary through business cycles. And what will typically happen is the revenues will fall dramatically during a recession or during a pandemic, whereas the cost burden on the city will not fall, so you'll go into deficit on net in recessions and surplus in booms. And, and a proper risk analysis needs to be done to see what risk exposure this development would put the city to during cycles. And the third thing is really just from a regional development standpoint. I think it'd be useful for council to ask, what city does Louisville want to be more like? And will this development cause Louisville to move in that path? If Louisville is happy being Louisville, then how will this development move it away from that position? So just a more holistic view, which I haven't seen either. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Graham. Next, our commenter is Diane Shepherd.
Hi, Diane Shepherd, eight-seventeen St. Andrews Lane in the Coal Creek Ranch neighborhood. We're original homeowners here for twenty-seven years. Thank you for this time to speak. I have three things I wanted to ask city council to consider. One is the truly open space issue without excessive payment, non-native sod and herbicide use. Number two, how to minimize the impact of construction on my neighborhood with some guidelines around quiet times during this long build-out period. And three, dark sky environment. So I agree that Louisville should keep the footprint small of Red Tail Ridge and natural open space larger. I'm encouraged by the conversation tonight. Thank you for that. I used to work at the old storage tech campus. I know that property and how beautiful it is. There are other commercial areas that are not built out yet, one being Centennial Valley, which has been mentioned, and two being in the CDC. I work in the CDC area now. There's lots of open property and vacant buildings still over there. And then another thing that I'm not sure has been discussed is that since the pandemic, many businesses have moved their employees to work from home. The Google campus in Boulder is a good example of this. Have you discussed even the possibility that all of the office space that's being proposed in Red Tail Ridge really isn't even necessary moving forward, given the work from home, which is not really returning? I mean, we're all working from home. My business is not changing that much as far as allowing us to stay home and work in this capacity. I live just down the hill from Red Tail Ridge, and so I'm concerned about noise and pollution and smell during this long build-out period. I often walk around Eighty-Eighth and Dillon early in the morning. And I can tell you that already I can hear garbage trucks and I smell diesel fumes lingering on the streets as early as six o'clock in the morning around the Monarch Campus and the Memory Care Center. So this is only going to be compounded when we start this long build-out period. Our HOA has always had rules around no construction, noise, or activity before seven AM. When's the build-out and, and all that going to happen? Is it going to allow it to be happened before and after dark, including lights and noise and pollution during those times? So I don't think we can really compartmentalize each constructions, each construction site and proposal. I think we do need to look at this holistically so that we understand all of that. So I do want to thank you all, city representatives, for your efforts. I'm encouraged by a lot of the conversation tonight. But let's just remember that we own this resource and that we need to protect the, the interests of the citizens more than we do the developers' gain and all of this. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Matt Jones.
Good evening. This is Matt Jones, two-six-five Dahlia Drive. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. Thanks for your deliberation on this. I want to talk about the environmental aspects of this, particularly the buildings not having natural gas and also open space. Natural gas is methane. If it off-gases more than four percent in an oil field, it's dirtier than coal from a climate perspective. It does that in the Greater Wattenberg, according to Instar scientists. Then you add the production value when they refine it and when they distribute it, and it is dirtier than coal. You should not be running any gas lines out to this place that will be there a lot longer than will be around, hundred years. That is just the wrong thing. You can do everything with electric. We have a heat pump in our home, and it works great. These folks can, too. If they're any industrial activities that can't do it, maybe they shouldn't, you shouldn't be promoting them, dirty businesses. Also, there's no reason they can't make a gold standard. Places are doing that all over the place. I know their consultant keeps saying they have the ability to do that. I don't buy it. You know, the Boulder County is doing a new building in Lafayette. It's going to be a gold standard. It's not on, on the transit line. That was their first reason it would make it. You should live up to what I think the Boulder County, or City of Boulder, excuse me, City of Louisville residents want you to do. Go knock on the door and ask them these questions. I know what you're going to hear. I've done a lot of that. Most people will say, yeah, they should do everything. They should do the most. To open space, remember you are coming from fifty percent requirement now. That's what's currently required on the site. That's what the current previous council thought was a reasonable place to be. And Joe Biden's keep America beautiful, thirty percent is what you should be shooting for. And yes, it's above the standard, but your criteria allows it. And to the notion that this developer's already made concessions, I don't think they have. They knew the rules at three million square feet and came in with six million square feet. It's like somebody speeding down Chariot sixty in a thirty. They made a lot of conflict in our community, and it's not helpful. North of Tape Drive makes a ton of sense from an environmental point of view. I used to do this kind of work, do this, do this kind of environmental planning. And that's where your riparian areas are. That's where the pond is and the drainage, even ephemeral springs, streams have much higher wildlife, because most of the wildlife depends on them in their wildlife, in their life cycle. And so you need a bu- a buffer from those creek areas. And so north of Tape Drive would be a very reasonable place to be on that. And not only that, that would get you to a higher number. And again, go out and ask somebody on this, go, go ask somebody, knock on some doors this weekend and say, would you want thirty percent open space preserved in this large development, new development? And I know what you're going to hear from most people. It's like, absolutely. Please represent us, please.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Maxine Most.
Hi, everybody. I am not going to repeat what other people have said because you've already heard it. I'm going to go with the water issue. I don't know any, if any of you have been up to the mountains recently or driven by any reservoirs in our state, but we have no water. And I understand we're building a new reservoir, but if we don't have any water to fill it, it's going to be a big problem. I included in the packet links to a couple articles. The first ever water shortage declared on the Colorado River is triggering water cuts for some states in the West. Arizona, Nevada, and Mexico are going to have to reduce their water consumption. Three Colorado River Basin reservoirs will be partially drained to keep Lake Powell producing hydropower. That is going to be the priority. We shouldn't be doing any development in this community unless we can figure out where the water is going to come from. And we need to face the reality that over the next decade, two decades, three decades, our water supply is not going to be what it is today. And so any development we do, we better think really hard and long about what that means for our community overall, because I think we need to be planning for all development at thirty to forty percent, at least less water than we have now. And I, I tell you, when I was up by the, that, the Big Mesa Reservoir, I drove up fifty because seventy was closed because of the mudslides towards, through Gunnison and towards Montrose. And there, there is just no water. It is frightening how low those massive reservoirs are, and they're going to be drained. So Lake Powell can keep producing energy. And so anything we do, you know, Matt was making some great points about the gold standard for sustainability. We better add water to that and recyclable water and, you know, minimizing any, any kind of development that's going to limit the amount of water that the ground's going to soak up when it has a chance to do that and to preserve whatever resources we have. I, I, I think that I agree with Matt about knocking on doors. I've been knocking on some doors lately, and I can tell you the people in this community are not happy about this development. They don't want it. They don't want, we don't need it. We, as someone said earlier, we have all this underutilized commercial industrial space as it is. And I think the, the economist who is talking about, you know, what this really means for our community and how, and really doing a serious cost beneficent, benefit analysis, you know, should be something that, that is routine and should be something we should be doing before we look at any development. But at a minimum, we should be taking Ashley's suggestions as far as the open space. But I really think if you look at what's happening in terms of the climate, water, and what this community wants, this development just doesn't make sense for Louisville.
Thank you. Next, we have interpreter.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, you can still hear me now. Okay.
Yes, we can.
All right, let me pull up the comments. Sorry, just a moment. Sorry, the management of this whole thing has been kind of a nightmare tonight. So, okay, these comments come from Machiko Christensen, five forty-three Adams Avenue in Louisville. And she says, I am wondering if you've ever heard of a concept called Donut Ec- And she says, I am wondering if you've ever heard of a concept called donut economics. It is an approach to sustainability that centers on public policy while recognizing human needs at the center of the circle, ecological destruction at the outside of the circle, and a regenerative and distributive economy that is the sweet spot for economic activity that represents the donut. One of the concepts that are considered with donut economics is that access to some communities is only provided to essential transportation and otherwise only provides access for things such as scooters, bikers, and other low-impact methods of transportation. The benefit is less asphalt and concrete in these built environments, referring to Mr. Bukai's comments or Bukal's comments. Clustering buildings and raising the height of buildings while offering more open space to me is simply blackmail. Uh, my suggestion is this, require a three-story limit to all buildings, require clustering, provide more open space in the GDP. Utilizing the concept of donut economics to drive decision-making with net zero considerations is the direction we should go. We may just be one of the first cities in the US that uses regenerative and distributive economics to drive decision-making at the local level. City council members represent the city of Lewisville and residents of Lewisville, not the outsiders. You can always put or pass new codes, new laws, and new resolutions and amendments to development plans. It is important to leave this for future city council members to decide. And a further uh, comment that she wanted to add was that the city of Lewisville truly is a white privileged community. And we need to take considerations for equity, diversity, and inclusiveness into any considerations that we make for further development within the city of Lewisville. That is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next our commenter is Stephanie Row.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep. All right, great. Um, first, I just wanted to touch on one thing really quickly, which was the uh, you mentioned earlier tonight in the discussion about the idea of wildlife underpasses or overpasses. Um, and I just wanted to point out, which all of you probably already know that there is one. Uh, it was installed a couple of years ago on Highway nine between Green Mountain Reservoir and Creming. Um, and you can see videos of it. It's amazing. All the animals are going across it. And it has resulted in a 90% result reduction in wildlife and vehicle collisions. So it's really not a bad idea. Um, but the reason I, I wanted to speak tonight was I, I just wanted to follow up. I sent you all a short little email today about this, but um, I just wanted to follow up on the presentation from the High Plains Environmental Center and the use of the word habitat in that presentation. And I'm hoping that you all will uh, drill down a, a bit more on um, the language there. The word habitat was used a, a several hundred times in that presentation. Um, but with our, never with any kind of modifying nouns attached to it. So we never had any sense uh, that they're planning for, you know, habitat for whom, right? Is it bear habitat or habitat for humanity or, or what? What specifically uh, are they envisioning? What creatures are they envisioning, envisioning uh, living there? Um, and related to that, I think that we also just need to point out that the site, the STK site already is habitat. There are many species living out there. And so the question is, what is their role in the new habitat that High Plains would create? Are they going to eradicate those species and create habitat for new and different species? Are they going to integrate them? I mean, what, what exactly is um, is the plan there? Finally, I also wanted to note that the current plan as proposed would require uh, the extermination of, it, it looks like between about 2,000 and 5,000 prairie dogs. Um, so I, I, I hope that you all will follow up with some questions on that, namely exactly how many prairie dogs are they going to exterminate? What are the methods that they will use in the extermination? Where are the exterminations going to take place and what is the schedule? Because those are, uh, those animals are, are an essential and integral part of the, the wildlife habitat that exists there now. And that's, um, I think that's it. Really, really solid discussion tonight. And I, I, it's just been really interesting and uh, to listen to and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up we have John Larry. Was I on mute when I called the next person? Next we have John Larry.
John, I think you need to unmute on your end.
I'm Larry 1116 Lafarge Avenue, Lewisville, Colorado. The statement that the open space proposal was more that than is required is flatly wrong. The minimum or the minimum plus is not as what is required. What is required is a de- is determined by applying the criteria in the municipal code. Yes, this proposal was better than the previous one, but simply being better is not a statutory criterion. Lewisville has not become great by requiring them the minimum or slightly more of any community amenities. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Tess Wilson.
Hi, um, so I'm Tess Wilson and I'm a student at Fairview. And I was just coming to say that I agree with Ashley and Kyle that everything in the north above Disk Drive um, should be open space because I feel like climate change is continuing to affect us, especially with the air. And we can't keep building like it doesn't exist. And this development will harm our water, air, and overall health. And so I think if everything above the disk drive is, is open space, then it will be the right decision to preserve our environment and continue to be a leader for future generations. And we have a single mission and that is to protect and preserve our planet. And so, um, please make the right decision to help all future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Cindy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Well, first of all, I want to challenge you to a value shift. So it's time for us to stop this whole paradigm where we just pave everything over for the maximum profit. And we don't give a thoughtful consideration to balance and sustainability. And secondly, I want to say we need more open space. We don't need to just move open space around from section to section. We need more open space. And I want to remind you what the attorney said in the last meeting of August 3rd. And she said, if, if council uses the five criteria where we can require additional public land dedication, if you use that code and you do it reasonably, your decision should be upheld. Biden's executive order for 30% conservation is a challenge to the local municipalities. And it should protect the city from any legal takings claims. If we are innovative and we're a leader and we require at least minimum 30% balance of open space, then we're following a national executive order. And the way I have heard the discussion tonight and the way I see it, we made all the criteria in 17.28.080 for more open space. And I also want to remind counsel about this residential conversation that the current comp plan does not allow residential use in special districts, as you can see on page 35 of the 2013 comp plan. And I also want to say, um, I, I really respect what each of you do and how much time you give to this position. And I want to remind you that your job is to represent your constituents. Not to be worried about if you're inconveniencing the developer or or they're upset or we have to give them something because we require something that's important for the city. So a member of the public went through all the letters that you've received in your packet to date. This does not include speakers, just letters. And you can double check the math. And if she wants to identify herself, her can, she can, I can't take credit for it. But it looks like we have 92% of your constituents that say do not approve the plan in this form. So that's 310 people that said do not approve this and maybe 26 in favor. So please, please, please listen to your constituents, be leaders, be innovative. Put at least 30% open space in this plan. And maybe Lewisville will make Money Magazine again. Or when we used to be one of the top small towns in the country. It's been 10 years, I think, since we made that. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. The next commenter is the phone number ending in eight two two six.
Good evening. This is Sherry Summer at 910 South Palisade Court. I want to thank you for examining this proposal very carefully. Um, earlier it was stated that OSAB and the Perth Board uh, gave their approval of of this GDP and that is not true. They did not serve as advisory boards. They were presented with two alternatives and they voted in favor of one. That is not, that's not advisory. We agree, we have a moral responsibility to make a good decision uh, on this parcel. We have not been able to go outside. I have not been able to go outside for weeks because of the, the poor air quality. Currently this parcel emits no emissions and we uh, and now we're thinking about 20,000 cars more per day. I agree that the, the area north of Disk Drive should be preserved. That would be about 40% of this property. Interestingly enough, if you take the two largest developments that uh, were done in the past, uh, Coal Creek and Centennial Valley, the average open space in those two areas was about 40%. And that would be 156 acres here, which would fit very perfectly above uh, Disk Drive. We need to think about the cost of traffic and think creatively, undergrounding roads perhaps. Um, using parking stretchers for solar arrays or for um, green roofs. We must think outside of the box. I want to challenge a couple of fallacies that I heard tonight that were just absolutely not true. Council did not signal that residential was undesirable in the last meet, in the, the meeting last summer. On the contrary, people were voicing their opinions about all kinds of things. This, this was the public that said they did not want residential. Uh, number two, this is absolutely not a substantial improvement over last year. Last year was asking for the money. Now we're asked, they're, we're being asked for the maximum allowed. Yeah, I don't even think that's a criteria that should even be thought of. Um, this is not time for minimum standards. It's not time for moving parcels around. It's time to really think about what's important for the future. Please do the right thing, represent people. I too have been knocking, I've knocked on hundreds of doors and I can tell you at least 92% of the people that I've talked to would agree with Ashley and Kyle's opinions tonight and with the majority of the comments tonight. Thank you very much.
The next commenter is Tiffany Boyd.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Boyd and I'm a constituent of Ward three and I live at 550 Grant Avenue. Um, thank you so much to council for this um, long drawn-out process that you are have a lot of endurance about. And um, thank you so much to the citizens of Lewisville who have really leaned in and are thinking about those seven generations. Not just the seven generations of city council, but the seven generations of citizens and children who will be living with your decisions. Um, you know, the people who show up are the people who have voices who are listened to. And it sounds like with 92% of people who have been listened to, that city council is really hearing that people want to care about these seven generations to come. We are making decisions in the middle of a climate crisis. Uh, we can push Bruba Call to make everything north of Disk Drive open space. We can push Bruba Call to, to think about mitigation, adaptation, and equity as much as possible when we are making decisions for our community. And, and it would be great to make Money Magazine, not just for the best small town, but for the best sustainably minded small town that's thinking about all of these decisions. And Michiko, thanks so much for bringing up donut economics, the regenerative and distributive econo- economics of that model, I think are awesome. Um, so again, just thank you to everyone on council. This is a, a really hard, long topic and you're all being very thoughtful. Thank you for listening to the citizens of Lewisville who are really trying to consider the seven generations down the road and that you are indeed making this decision in the middle of a climate crisis. So thank you so much and I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next up we have Tamar.
Hey, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. Um, this is Tamar Krantz and I live at 691 West Street. Um, I also want to ask you to please represent the people and not the developer. Um, the attorney, um, attorney last meeting pointed out that you'll not be abusing your discretion to require um, more open space on this site. And you can request adequate sustainability measures without fear of abusing your leverage because it is reasonable to clarify and build upon the measures that were already offered up by the developer. Um, I also was, really wanted to ask you tonight, if you could let your, let the residents know what your values are as you're making this decision. Um, I, I want to ask that you not give, that there's three reasons that I don't think would be acceptable to me and most of the public um, for approving this development tonight. Um, first, please don't say that we need the tax revenue for the city. The mere $1.2 million per year at 80% build-out is not worth all the loss of quality of life and environmental degradation. If you approve this, um, will you be voting to give back some of this money in tax revenue to business assistances in the form of tax reductions for those businesses that set up at Redtail Ridge? Will you vote to use some of that 1.2 million in tax revenue to fund infrastructure improvements beyond those that are proposed if they become necessary at a laser phase? And also, if each of the 20,000 additional vehicle trips is 10 miles using an EPA emission factor and um, an average vehicle miles per gallon, um, I can get to 80 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents per day. Will you use some of the tax dollars that you get from this development to offset the additional carbon that this is going to include? What I'm just trying to say about that is that this does not meet the neutral fiscal benefit. So I don't think you should approve it on those grounds without answering those questions. And second, please don't say that you have to approve this because it meets our code. If you decide that it does meet the code, could you please clarify to the public how that you feel that this meets the definition of a planned community zone district with a purpose to encourage, preserve, and improve the health, safety, and general welfare of the people and how it uses contemporary land planning principles and coordinated community design? Finally, um, don't say that it's good for our economy because you haven't done an economic analysis. As one of the previous speakers pointed out, um, there are risks to the city um, involved in doing a development like this. And I can't say that you have demonstrated a positive benefit, which is required by the policy in the comprehensive plan. Finally, I'd like to ask you, don't forget, I know you haven't talked about it yet, but please don't forget to talk about making the transportation management, um, demand management a binding requirement. I'm out of time, so thank you so much for everything you're doing and I really appreciate the discussion.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Jan Prokop.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks. My name is Jan Prokop and I live at 637 West Street. I've been a homeowner here for the last 28 years and I love living in Lewisville. I take great pride in our small town and I'm grateful for the green open spaces and the trail systems that surround us. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to city council in regard to Redtail Ridge and your thoughtful discussions tonight. I, I'm not in support of the current proposal. The square footage and the footprint are too big. 3.1 million square feet of structures and parking lots will create an unwanted heat island. And with no confirmed tenants, tenants, this appears to be development for development's sake. And who benefits in that situation? An additional 20,000 car trips a day will contribute to our air pollution and traffic congestion. The amount and percentage of open space proposed is pitifully small. Once open space is developed, we will never get it back. I think we should protect and preserve the current wetlands and wildlife ecosystem we have currently. I think we should protect and preserve the current wetlands and wildlife ecosystem we have currently. I'm not convinced this proposal offers substantial benefits to the city of Louisville that will contribute to our town or quality of life. We deserve better, and I ask you to vote against this current proposal, and thanks for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Laura Parks Peterson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Laura Parks Peterson. I live at twenty-two ninety-seven Cliff Rose Lane in Louisville. I'm very familiar with this property. I worked at the Storage Tech campus from nineteen eighty-one until Sun Microsystems bought Storage Tech and moved the employees to Interlochen in Broomfield. Over the years, this beautiful vacated land has in large part returned to its natural state, and it's become a critical wildlife habitat. This development proposal has been branded as Redtail Ridge, which is probably meant to evoke pleasant thoughts of red-tailed hawks serenely circling over a lovely ridge of land. Once the earth movers and bulldozers get to work, the wildlife will be driven out. There will no longer be any red-tailed hawks peacefully circling above it, despite the evocative Redtail Ridge name. Please consider the lasting impact that your vote will have on the residents of Louisville for current and future generations. How do you want to look back on your time as trusted representatives of the residents of Louisville? Do you want to be remembered for more asphalt, more pollution, more traffic congestion? Or do you want to be remembered for having the moral courage to stand up to the consultants and big-money interests who think that you can be fooled by a slick marketing campaign? Do you want to be able to look in the mirror with a clear conscience and know that you took the tough vote that you knew in your heart was the only right thing to do? The residents of Louisville do not want this development, and you were elected to represent us. Please vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public care to comment on the, on this application? This is your final round of public comment on this ordinance. The next commenter is the phone number ending in nine zero zero seven.
Hi there. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. My name is Chris Barr. I live at six oh one Spruce Circle. Thank you all for letting me speak today. I'm a longtime resident of Louisville. I'm a several members of my family and both of my friends. These things occur them as well. I sent a much longer email to the council today, but I have two main points that I want to use to speak to. And I'm speaking for the record against this proposal. The developer claims that this development makes sense in the post-COVID world and accurately addresses the need that companies will have, namely office space. The developer is wrong. In the post-COVID world, companies are divesting themselves of office space like never before. Some companies, like Indeed, which employs about 10,000 people, have given their entire staff the option to work from home. Corporate giants like Google are moving that way as well. So why then should we build more of what isn't needed? You're not obligated to make the developer money, and if they're to develop anything here, they must prove that their plan provides actual economic benefit to our city. This plan blatantly ignores the economic reality of the world right now, and to approve it would also ignore the economic reality of Louisville. We have dozens of potential sites across town which are either up for rent or could be developed, some of which have been sitting unused for several years now. We build more offices with no committed tenants, they'll just sit empty like what we already have. The problem is not availability of space, it's getting people to use what's there. Secondly, development like this is one of the leading causes of climate change right now. People have spoken about this already, and perhaps you've seen the UN report, which was rather damning. And what we need to be doing right now in light of those facts is preserving our planet, not paving it over more. This development would only contribute to the worsening drought we are experiencing, worsen the already oppressed urban destroy, what are people places for wildlife at the moment. So if you want to explain to your kids or your grandkids what it was like to be able to swim Coal Creek, clearly see the mountains from our city, or what they expect for the prey we like in their life, then go ahead and approve it. But if you want your kids to experience those things for themselves, then we need to keep this kind of development out of our city. For these, among many other reasons, I ask that you reject this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public care to comment this evening? All right, seeing none, that takes us back over. So next, we have the applicant presentation, and then additional council discussion and motion.
Thank you, Mayor Stolzmann. And really, what we just want to do is address a few of the items that have been brought up, and really, just from a clarification standpoint. And categorically, we want to touch on habitat, and so I'd like to ask Kristin Oles, who's with our Habitat Management Consultant, to come on and, and touch on habitat. Kristin?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Kristin Oles. I'm the Restoration Ecology Project Manager for the High Plains Environmental Center, and we are a nonprofit based out of Loveland who has a twenty-year history now of working with developers to balance habitat protection and open space in their development plans. And so what I wanted to do right now is just to highlight some of the parts of the management plan that we've already written for the Redtail Ridge site, just to bring some clarity around how open space is being protected in this plan. So the first thing is, as I mentioned last meeting, we, HPC, will be providing feedback and recommendations on any relevant development plans that may potentially impact existing high-value habitat. And our goal with that is to find as many ways as possible for development to actually enhance or add to the existing habitat at the site in, as opposed to, you know, having negative impacts on that open space. And this is going to include development immediately adjacent to the highest value habitat on the site, which is those riparian areas, the wetlands around the ponds that already exist there. There are other sort of open areas that are lower-quality habitat. They have been, they've been grazed and have been managed for grazing, and so aren't necessarily the most high-quality for other types of wildlife. And so for those wetland areas, High Plains Environmental Center actually has direct experience with this kind of development on our 276-acre property. We have a set of three-story office buildings that are immediately adjacent to some of our wetland habitat around our facility, and we were able to mitigate some of the negative effects of human development through some thoughtful design choices. And you can kind of see an example of this in the diagram on this slide. The two kind of highest impacts from human development that we consider are vehicles and then people just moving around, that kind of activity. And so in our strategy, we actually use the building itself to provide a, to shield that open space from that heavy activity from traffic from people. And together with some thoughtful vegetation designs to provide additional shielding, we were able to both protect that open space and allow for some low-impact human enjoyment through the trail system that goes through these areas. And so this is great wildlife habitat. There's interesting wildlife that use these areas all year round. We have excellent birding at our facility, even though we are surrounded on essentially all sides by development. And so, yeah, that's, those are the kind of recommendations we're going to be providing for any, any development adjacent to open space, and really, any sort of, anything relevant to habitat at the site. There were also some comments about the tree management on the site, which is especially important because trees, after the wetland habitat, trees are some of the the other highest-value habitat sources on the site. And in our management plan, we actually recommended leaving any tree that exists on the site in place unless it's a risk to safety. And that's either to, you know, people or property. And that is true for trees that are alive and thriving, for trees that are kind of dying, struggling as they do naturally. Trees that have died and are standing or fallen down any tree because they provide habitat regardless of what state they're in. We also recommended, in the areas that we highlighted that have particularly valuable, valuable mature trees, which are around the ponds and wetlands, we recommended some ways to improve those areas even further, and that's to utilize the tall canopy of those established trees and add some lower canopy that provides food and shelter, just some variation in that habitat, and so that will be even improving some of that existing high-value habitat. And so, yes, I think that was all I had about the trees. And the, oh, the only other thing was just that we did not do an exhaustive survey of all the trees on the site, but we are planning on evaluating trees outside of those protected wetland areas on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, Kristin. And then I thought, based on the discussion, it'd also be helpful to clarify some comments made during the transportation section. So with that, I'd invite Bill Fox, Transportation Consultant, to, to chime in. And Bill, I don't know, are you on, or maybe you need to raise your hand? Oh, there he comes. Okay.
Mute. And turn off the video. Can, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm not sure you can see me, but that's probably not important right now. But I, I've been taking notes and listening to the comments that have been made regarding transportation, and I want to respond to three main areas that I heard about tonight, one being issues surrounding Campus Drive, both its existence and its alignment. Second being, what about off-site improvements, both with the development, the need for off-site improvements with development, but without the development as well? And then third, why do we need four-lane roads? And, and why would we recommend four-lane roads? And so, let's start with Campus Drive. And so with Campus Drive, this, this development provides the opportunity to construct Campus Drive, which, as I know the community would like to see happen. And the construction of Campus Drive eliminates the need for the city to widen a portion of Dillon Road from Ninety-Sixth over to Eighty-Eighth, and also widen a portion of Eighty-Eighth from Dillon down to Campus Drive. So those, those two widening projects will likely be needed over time without the extension of Campus Drive. So extending Campus Drive would be a benefit in that regard, and it would distribute more equitably the school traffic that occurs in this area and some of the hospital traffic. So what about the alignment of Campus Drive? And we've looked at it from a, a couple of different ways. One, should it wrap up and, and connect with Paradise and come out at Ninety-Sixth at Paradise Lane? Or should it extend relatively straight east and come out at Ninety-Sixth in the vicinity of the fire department? And various studies have shown it in the past in, in different ways. The, the city's recent transportation master plan shows it extending straight east and coming out by the fire station, and you can see that in my report on figure twenty of my report on page fifty-four. But the previous studies have also shown it ramping, wrapping up and coming out at, at Paradise Lane. So what is that, what, what does that change? Well, if it wraps up to Paradise Lane, you're combining office and commercial traffic with low-density residential traffic. And if you keep it separate, you can avoid that. The issue of queuing was brought up, and can, can Campus Drive extend and come out by the fire department? And would that extend, you know, cause queuing down to the Northwest Parkway, say? And then if you look in our appendix of our report, table C four, I believe, is a, a pretty exhaustive queuing analysis at all the intersections, and you'll see that the vast majority of time, virtually all the time, there is no queuing issue where the queues from Campus Drive would extend south all the way to the Northwest Parkway. So I think that the Campus Drive could be constructed where it's proposed, adjacent to the fire department. The fire department could come out with the benefit of a signal at that intersection. Also was discussed whether our Campus Drive, or if you, if you leave Campus Drive there, by the fire department, would, would Paradise also need a traffic signal? The answer in my mind is no. There's not enough residential density or potential density on either side of Ninety-Sixth in that area to warrant a traffic signal in the future. So anyway, there's certainly both sides of that discussion about Campus Drive, but I think it can work in the, in the location that it's been proposed. And also, I'm, I'm aware that Boulder County has weighed in to say they don't want it to wrap up to Paradise Lane. Okay, so that's Campus Drive. Probably enough about that. What about background tra, or what about the need for off-site improvements? And earlier, Mr. Zakaro showed a figure from our report. It was actually figure E two, I believe, that showed future need for off-site improvements with the development in place. The previous figure, one page up from that in our report, is the same graphic showing the need for off-site improvements without the development occurring. And what you will see, if you compare those two graphics, is that virtually all of the off-site improvements need, needed when the development is in place are, will also be needed when, as background traffic grows, and, and even if this site were to remain vacant. So obviously, this site brings more traffic to the area, and, and what it does is accelerate the need for these off-site improvements, but it does not. But those are same off-site improvements will, are projected to be needed regardless. It's just a matter of when. And this, you know, the, obviously, the development provides a potential funding partner for, for some of the off-site improvements. And, and, okay, so, so if you compare figures E one and E two, or, or look at table E two, which also puts it in words, the side-by-side comparison with and without the development, what, what, when, what and when off-site improvements are needed. So I encourage you to look at that. And then, lastly, topic three was, what about four-lane roads? Why do we need four-lane roads? And I'm a big advocate of not paving any more of Colorado than is absolutely necessary. I'm advocate for narrow lanes. Always advocate for the minimum number of lanes needed. And what you'll see is that the four-lane roads that I recommended are just in that first block between Sorrel Drive and the Northwest Parkway. That first block in on the west side of Northwest Parkway is where the four-lane roads are shown, both on Campus Drive and on Rock Crest Drive. And part of the need is to accommodate the traffic, or to get it into Sorrel Drive and then distribute it through, to the site, but also to accommodate the, the double-left turns that will be required to get traffic in and out efficiently to and from the Northwest Parkway at those intersections. So those are the, really, the four-lane roads that we've recommended, and no more than that. And just, just lastly, you know, the previous ConocoPhillips proposal had higher peak hour traffic, so they had even had, I think, wider roads projected in both of those locations to accommodate the inbound and outbound peak hour traffic to that development. So, anyway, I think I've addressed most of the the transportation questions. Certainly, there could be many more, and, and I'm around if, if more come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And really, with that, I think we just wanted to clarify a few things there. But Mayor Stolzmann, we can now turn it back to you, and certainly, our team, our full team is available for any clarifying questions that you or any council member might have. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baffo. And Councilmember Lee, I thought I saw your hand for a second with perhaps a question.
Um, you did. I didn't know where now is the, the time. I, I just wanted to ask Mr. Fox about one comment that I, I may just not have understood. And it was on the first topic around Campus Drive, and he had just said something about figure twenty. And I think you discussed, and it was right before, you talked about queuing. But you talked about combining streams of traffic, and I didn't follow, I didn't follow the logic, and may not have understood the, the comment. Do you, do you remember talking about, I mean, I, I presume that it was one of the, the reasons that led you to a different conclusion, but we're to sure, put that out, but I, or to move Campus Drive or not move it, but.
Sure. So just to clarify then, what I meant by combining different types of traffic, right now Paradise Lane is a very rural, low-volume residential street. And, and if you were to take Campus Drive, wrap it up and align it with And if you were to take Campus Drive, wrap it up and align it with Paradise Lane, then you now have combined that low-volume rural traffic with the intense access to the school that will occur on that stretch of road and all the traffic that will come to and from the office and commercial industrial uses on the site. So that's what I meant by combining the two. And certainly, if you lived on Paradise Lane, you probably wouldn't want that to happen. But so that's what I was talking about, about combining those two. And from a queuing perspective, we looked at whether or not, if you put Campus Drive to come out by the fire station as illustrated, will there be queuing between that location down to E470, or, sorry, Northwest Parkway? And also, would there be queuing up to the existing Paradise Lane? And in both cases, the queuing from the Campus Drive intersection by the fire station would not extend far enough to negatively impact those other two intersections. So I hope I answered your, or clarified your question.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, I'd like to thank the applicant for responding and bringing those forward. I thank the members of the public for coming out tonight and commenting. And so, at some point, we'll need direction from council on how to move forward and motions and those sorts of things. But if folks have questions that they have written down that haven't been addressed, now would be a good time to get them out. And the first one I noticed on my notes is around the use groups. I wonder, Director Zakaro, if you could pull up the use groups that are being listed in the general development plan? If you could pull up that sheet of the GDP and take us through some of your thought process on the use groups that are allowable in this area. It's not, because, you know, we're supposed to discuss the type and kinds of development. And we've really kept it very high level, like commercial and industrial. But if you look at the use group table, there are actually lots of types of uses that we're proposing, putting and allowing in here that I would like to understand why they've been included, like gas stations and nonprofit-type institutions.
Sure. So hopefully, you can see my screen here, and I'll get to the use groups. On the GDP, so the way the use group table is structured is, sorry, this is taking a long time to come up here, is that the applicant is proposing some character areas. So there's basically an industrial research area, then there's an office area, and then more of a mixed office, industrial, and commercial area. See if it'll come up here. So that's laid out by parcel. So really, what the applicant is proposing is they've gone into our use groups within our municipal code. And they've listed, you know, they've looked within the standard office or industrial districts, what would typically be allowed. And they're requesting that they be allowed by right if this would be approved. So that's a "why." It would be a "yes." So that's typically what you'd see. Now, within the, I would note that there are certain uses, say, for example, in the industrial, standard industrial districts, that would be special review uses. Some of those are marked as "yes" because they wanted to confirm allowance of those through the GDP. The, there are no special review uses proposed with this GDP. It's just what's intended to be allowed or not. There's also limited commercial allowed within the industrial areas. They're limited to a certain percent. And the concept behind that is that, you know, we don't, you know, there's a vision or character for the property to be primarily industrial or office. If there is support uses, they should be, you know, a lower percentage of the uses within that development. So there are some restrictions for those types of retail or support commercial uses within the office and industrial development. So those are outlined in the table as well. Gasoline service stations are a standard allowed use in our current code, as it's currently laid out. There are gasoline service stations within the PCZD. Commercial area are allowed with certain performance standards rather than special review use under our standard commercial allowance. But again, this is a custom use table. So the way the GDP is supposed to work is their standard industrial and commercial uses within the GDP table. But an applicant can request to modify those, to add to them. City council likewise can, you know, restrict uses as well. So that's kind of the thought process behind how this is laid out.
Thank you, Director Zakaro. So like in another business park, like Centennial Valley, so like schools, the first one, public and private schools. Is that allowed in Centennial Valley?
Public and private schools are not allowed in Centennial Valley under their current GDP. Because they refer, they have much more basic language. And then they also refer to the general commercial uses within the code. And schools, private and public, are not allowed on that GDP or under other underlying PCZD use list.
So just, I'm not picking on schools, I like schools. I don't need to get a thousand letters in the mail at schools. I'm just trying to understand, like, what is and isn't common and what latitude there is really. Because I mean, to say a business park, you know, people kind of have an image of what that is. Or an industrial park, people kind of have an image of what that is. But I sort of kind of am looking at, so what if, what if only 1% of this gets developed? And then everything goes bankrupt and walks away? So like, what if the only thing that gets developed is a gas station? What if the only thing that gets developed is a church and a gas station and a school? It certainly would have different performance standards from the fiscal and economic benefit than kind of the other things that people have been putting out there. So I'm just trying to understand that. And so I guess, my first review of this, when I did it without having the benefit of the rest of the council's input and just getting the public input that was included in the packet, is that gas stations should not be an allowable use on the property. And then I just think that some of those other nonprofit uses that are listed here that are not allowed in our other business parks should not be allowed. So those types of uses that are very nice things like schools, but don't have any kind of fiscal benefit to the community. And I think the other hands are up before I started talking, so I doubt that they're about this use group table. So at the risk of opening up another topic, I'll just call the person who has hands up next, Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. Actually, I do have a different topic, and that is the whole question of sustainability that we discussed at our last meeting, but never got any input from the developer on what could or could not be presented. I really enjoyed the Cupertino presentation and would love to see us move in that direction. So if the developer has any comments about what they would or could propose regarding electricity to the property, EV charging stations, et cetera.
Mr. Baffo?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Fahy. So we can address a couple of things in regards to sustainability. And going back to that conversation, we had already addressed kind of the LEED silver and gold and the locational challenges associated with that. And really, the same application applies to LEED certified industrial versus LEED silver. And we had our LEED consultant branch pattern put together a LEED scorecard for industrial. And we can get, I think, a very, very solid LEED score. It got us to a 44, which puts you right in the middle of LEED certified. But without the locational points afforded in the LEED program, it's very hard to get to a LEED silver. So it's that, and we had that discussed the last time, we don't need to labor that. But I will say that the 30 commitments we made really aligned with the sustainability plan with Lewisville. So while we're striving to reach a very, very solid LEED certification on both the office and the industrial, it's the commitments that I think are the best alignment with Lewisville's sustainability plan in place. And then, Jay, do you want to speak to electrification? And our kind of thoughts there?
Sure, you bet. So, you know, when we deal with the electrification of any of these projects, you know, the office piece is actually certainly very doable, whether it's in an office building or if it's an industrial building. When we look at different process uses, and that was brought up, I think Director Zakaro brought that up, but it's very difficult to get to that point without a use of gas. And so that's where we're standing, at least on that portion of the industrial uses. So we've got the LEED side of it, but then we also have, within that industrial product type, a couple of different applications that are not that difficult to do with electricity and others that are. And then finally, there was a question, I believe it was last, in our last meeting about, and it was brought up by one of the council members, about being electric-ready or having the plugins, the ability in the future for buildings to go to all-electric. We were able to verify through our engineers and through Excel that that's certainly an application that we can commit to on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that, I lost my mute button for a moment. Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, I would like to have a further conversation on the sustainability issues. But first, on the general development plan, since Rob, you do have it up. And I have a question on general note, number one. If you could get to it.
Yeah, just a second, let me remember where that is. Is that a note below the use table?
It's under development acreage, then there are general notes.
Okay, okay, those are footnotes. Is it on page two?
It's on page two, on the right-hand side.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so you're close. It's just filling in.
All right, have I zoomed in enough for everybody to see it?
Yes, but can you see it?
I can see it, yes.
Okay, so general note number one, second sentence, it reads, "The total amount of public land shall be set forth in the table above, with the understanding that the net acreage of the public lands may be less as a result of easements required during the platting process." So is that normal customary language in general notes on a GDP? Or is that, and exactly what does that mean?
Sure, yeah. So the GDPs usually don't get into this level of clarification. However, you know, the code for public land dedication specifically related to subdivision flats say that areas encumbered by easements need to be excluded from the, you know, the minimum, meeting the minimum public land dedication area. So, so I think what they're proposing, so what, the purpose of the note is that they're showing, you know, 67 gross acres of public land dedication. They've made an estimate of what that net would be when you exclude known easements. So if they exclude, you know, if there's a platting requirement for other, let's say, you know, utility easements or drainage easements that would count against that net acreage, they're acknowledging that, but in no case could they go below the minimum, you know, 12% per the platting code, the subdivision code, when they get to that point.
Yeah, so I don't think anybody's contemplating they're going to be at 12%. I'm just trying to contemplate in my mind what that means in terms of what the city would ultimately get.
Yeah, the gross area would be the same, that 67 acres would be the same. If you look at up here, above the note, where it says 67 versus 59.3, that 67 wouldn't change. It's the 59.3 that could be reduced as far as the net calc, if there are additional easements within those areas.
These easements could be on public land, so we're not giving up our right to the public lands just because of an easement, I would assume.
That's correct, yes. We wouldn't be giving up the right, the land would still be beaded to us, to the city. So we would own those lands. I think the idea, the reason we have this provision in the code, I believe, is so that a developer doesn't just deed us undevelopable land.
Right. So I assume you're comfortable with that note?
Yes, staff did work with the applicant on the wording of the note, and we are comfortable with it.
Good, thank you. Next, I did, you know, I sent under separate cover a list of questions and comments I had related to sustainability. Mayor, I don't know what your plan is for tonight. And I'm not sure the applicant had a chance to take a look at it, since most of these do require some response from the applicant. So I could launch into these, or if you think we're gonna?
I was, I've, so I guess, let's take the temperature of the council on that. So it's 10:06, but there was very little comment earlier from council members going through different agenda items. So it seemed like, just from people's tone and temperament, it seemed like people were working toward getting to some kind of conclusion tonight. I may have misread the vibe. So if there's still a lot of questions that people want to work through, you know, it's after 10. And maybe we would continue, but if people feel like we're getting close to a place where we'll be able to give direction and move forward with some kind of action, then we should do that. Where are people coming from? I mean, Councilmember Lipton, do you have like three hours of questions? Or do you have a few questions to work up that will be made into conditions of approval?
Your questions, they're in Appendix 14, they're like.
I saw them, and the developer had a chance for closing statements and made some comments. They didn't directly address your questions.
No, and we can do it tonight, or we can do it some other time. I think, I think Counselor Fahy has interest in some of this too. It would probably be beneficial to find out whether or not they're interested in doing some of the things that are in these suggestions or questions.
I saw a hand briefly. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I was just kind of harkening back to the question I had raised earlier on, because certainly, one of the things that we're talking about, I don't know, we haven't necessarily reached closure on it, but is the issue of kind of the amount of open space that we're talking about, and particularly the suggestion that maybe we try to seek all of the area above Tate Drive as open space that we might want to talk to or have a, have our city attorney just take a look at that briefly and advise, advise us as she was suggesting. I think that might be a good idea.
Okay, so Councilmember Lay, your proposal is that there might be good reason to not finish tonight, that there might be some things people want to be able to understand better. Did everybody on council get a chance to read Councilmember Lipton's memo that's included in the packet? I mean, do people want to have a discussion about that tonight? I'm not, I don't agree that we should use open space for solar farms in the development if we want to talk about where solar farms are appropriate. I think that the solar is a laudable thing that the developer's putting in. I think the rooftop solar and shelterings over parking lots and things like that are great opportunities, especially when there's so much asphalt that's being proposed. But I think taking the open space for that is not, that's not something I'm interested in.
Could I clarify, I didn't intend this to be open space with a capital S. This would be the, I think we use the term common open space. So it'd be those areas that were hatched, and not to use all of them, but just a small portion of them, as long as we're not inhibiting view corridors or, you know, habitat issues. So, you know, I didn't want people to think that I'm going to use city open space for this purpose, but it was some of that. So, you know, I I didn't want people to think that I'm going to use city open space for this purpose, but it was some of that 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 hatched. Community common open space that I hadn't interested.
I I don't want to dominate the conversation. Other council members might feel very differently. I just think they, as I understood the developer to say it last time, that they have some large rooftops that are sort of proposed areas for those arrays. And when I look at the general development plan, there are huge swaths of parking space and rooftop that seem more appropriate than taking. Land. So I'm not, I'm also not getting, so let's just back up for one second. So it seems like now two folks, two people have weighed in that. Maybe it looks like we won't be able to get to a consensus tonight. And so if that's the case, maybe we need to start, you know, getting to a point where we are at a stopping point, kind of putting some things out that we need staff to work on for next time. But I need to understand where everyone is. So if I would like to understand if everyone's expectation is that we just work on this a bit more. And work toward a conclusion, or if people are thinking that we will wait and continue this again and take it up at a future date. Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you, Mary. Yes. I think there is a lot more discussion that needs to happen before we make a decision on this. I really don't like the idea of continuing it again, but there seems to be a lot of difference of opinion on some pretty important issues. So I would vote to continue it to another meeting.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. I'd probably echo sort of what Councilmember Fahy just said. I'd like to come to completion, but what I don't know is, you know, if what we're trying to do is approve with conditions and we really need to get. Down to what those conditions are and exactly what we what we need. I think that's a conversation we could maybe make a decent amount of progress on tonight, and maybe we have to continue, but make some progress on it. If we're headed towards denial. Then, you know. Extending this for another week or two seems unnecessary. So I don't really know what the pulse of council is. I'm interested in in pursuing. Approval with conditions. Considering a lot of the input that we've gotten from from our residents and from council comments that I think there are a lot of things that we need. For this to be a shining example of what development in Louisville looks like. And maybe we can get to some resolution there and on on what what it is that we would want, but but I don't know if that's the direction of council. And so. If we're trying to figure out whether we're even approving this at all. With or without conditions, then, yeah, I mean, maybe it's a quick, maybe it's a quick thumbs down, we're done. But if if we feel like this is something that we're. Looking to find a way to move forward, then then maybe we need another meeting to get through all of the details of what it is would be. Requesting, so I don't know if that's helpful or not, but at least that's where I stand.
It is very helpful, and let me try to summarize what I think you proposed, and if it's not what you proposed, please correct me. So I I think I heard you say. Let's work on it a little bit more to see if there is some coalescence around the types of conditions we would want to see staff bring back. And that'll give staff and the attorney and the applicant time to work on those things in interim. And then they can bring back things that have been not drafted from the dais for our consideration at a future meeting. And then through that discussion of those kind of items that we're talking about as conditions, we might be able to flesh out if there are just such big divides. On the council that we need to take a vote on these things. I think that's what I heard you say. Does that sound okay to everybody? Mayor Proton Maloney.
I think, Mayor, thank you. I I think you captured what councillor Dickinson was was mentioning and and others. I feel like I don't have everything answered. So the letter from councillor Lipton. On August twelfth, there's a number of questions and ideas there I would like to have the applicant address. And then the also the discussion we had about open space. You know, someone was talked about purposeful open space and that C three area. You know, what do we do about that if we? So I think there's there's a number of questions that are still out there based on our discussion tonight that. I would like to see answered before we move ahead, but I am with councillor Dickinson. I mean. Are we moving towards trying to conditionally approve this? Or is there a general sense that we're not going to approve this? You know, I'm of the opinion that. And I know there's a lot of challenges with this, and our citizens certainly voiced all those. There are challenges with doing this. We do have a responsibility for economic sustainability, so it's a balance of making sure. That we do the right thing for the city for the long term, and there's a lot of balance there. I I do like the. Sustainability plan that the developer came in with, and some of those things we have talked about making it stronger. But some of these things are are not really addressed and. And the questions that councillor Lipton asked, you know, just talking about. Different kinds of HVAC and so forth are are really good and solid valid questions I'd like the answers to. So we can do a better job of figuring out what our conditions are based upon. Their their answers to those questions and their ability to meet those. Thank you.
And Mayor Proton Maloney, if you could just elaborate, do you want to have some more discussion around that tonight? To try to frame and tee that up for a future discussion, or are we?
I I think we need to move this to another meeting with the intention that we've we finalized this discussion at the next meeting. I I think that, you know, answering all these questions. We could be here another two hours where it's something that. I I think that the applicant could just answer all those questions, whether it be in. You know, corresponds to the city, whatever, but I don't think, I don't think we're going to do this quickly. That's that's my opinion, and I would like to see us do this consciously. And deliberately, and I don't think we can do that at this point in time.
Thank you, councilmember Maloney, or Mayor Proton Maloney, I'm sorry about that. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I I just, I feel like if we're to stop now. I don't really have a good sense of of where council's heading. So I just think a little a little more discussion, not to get to the end, a little more discussion to to say like. Hey, I think I think the location of Campus Drive is absolutely undoable. Oh, I think it's okay. I think he's like. Having some sense of, is is Campus Drive a major issue for us? Are we okay with its location? Do we all agree it should be moved farther north? Like. Because we come back two weeks from now, and then we have that conversation, but we're going to have to continue like. If if that hasn't been talked about, how is the the developer supposed to come back with? A proposal about a new location or new orientation of Campus Drive, one lane versus two lanes. If we, you know, if. You know, if if we don't give more substantive direction about how we feel about. The open space quantity, I mean, there are some people throwing out that we have one hundred and sixty acres of open space above disk drive dedicated. That's that's, like, if the developer has to come back with a concept of not developing anything above disk drive. That's a pretty important thing for them. So if we don't have a conversation tonight about whether that's where we're headed. I don't think we're doing ourselves any good coming back here two weeks from now. So, you know, I think we need to make more progress on what it is we might be willing to stomach. Or the conditions we might put on it. I mean, that one alone, right? Like whether whether or not there's consensus on council. That we want everything north of disk drive to be open space. That's, I mean, that's, I think that's make or break on the entire project. So if we don't have that conversation tonight, I don't see why we go for it at all. Because if they come back two weeks from now and say, yeah, actually, I think we do want everything north of this drive, the whole conversation's null and void. I mean. It's it's an entirely different project. So so I think we need to get a little bit more accomplished tonight in order for us to feel like, in order for me, sorry. I don't want to speak for you guys, in order for me to feel like I know where we're headed next week, and I know what I'm looking for from them. So I I propose that we. And the mayor, I I you're you're running the show for how we have that conversation, but I think we should talk more tonight.
Thank you, councilmember Dickinson. I I really appreciate that candid opinion. Councilmember Lee.
Councilmember Dixon raises a really good point. I I think we all want to get to a decision. For the city, for, you know, the applicant, for us to to be able to to move on. I I think the the problem is that. I used to, I used to say to my daughter, I used to say to my daughters that nothing good ever happened after two AM. And to some extent. We don't make really great decisions, I think, after ten PM. The kinds of things that that. Councilman Dixon says are absolutely right. These are, these are big. These are big issues. But this is a big, important proposal. Everybody who writes to us, I think all of us probably agree that this is a. This is a transformative. Project. A transformative development in our city. So while I don't think we should delay for delays sake, I think. You know, I've raised only, I raised that one issue. That's not the only issue I have. I I'd kind of like to collect my thoughts on some of these things. I think some others might. As well about the kind of potential conditions they have in mind, much less things that staff might be suggesting. So. But I think that we would be. You know, I'd hate for us to sell your. Your proposal, Mayor, short. By not getting the input of the city attorney. For us to at least ponder that. I all, because I I think no matter how we come, I don't want to just do that in a vacuum. I think it's really important, so that's.
That's really useful. And so I wonder, councilmember Lee, would it address your concern if we gave staff direction? To come back with a path forward to requiring everything north of disk drive as open space, so that they could make findings for us and come back with a path on that.
Question, I I don't know that we've had.
I mean, it's one question to ask an attorney, you know, is this illegal? Another question is to ask, how can we do this properly? What is the proper approach for doing this?
Yeah. I think that's, I think it'd take more discussion.
Yeah, so I'm I'm just trying to see if there's.
We've got two proposals. We've got two proposals that are there. There's the one that's been presented to us. And the one that you proposed. You know, do.
I was just proposing something to respect what both you and councilmember Dickinson were saying. So councilmember Dickinson, I think, made some good points around like. You know, are we even all on the same page? Where are we on these different big issues? And so some of us have spoken, and it's clear where some of us are, but it's not clear where the body is. And so. I think he was making some good points around like, hey, he doesn't even know. Sitting knowing all of us and hearing all the comments where we're going. So are there some things we could lay out that would both respect your desire to get some additional information in the meantime and make sure that we're all following the process and the law as best as we all can? And, you know, with the spirit and intent of everything that we've all sworn an oath to follow. So I was just trying to find a path forward that I think may satisfy both of your requests, but it also may not. And now we have. Spent about twenty minutes not talking about the substance of the issue, but the process, so that does concern me a little. Mayor Proton Maloney.
So honestly, I'm a little taken back about what we've sworn to do. I know, I think we all are taking this very seriously. Even though we might have different perspectives. And if we're going to go back to try to talk about the substance of this, what I talked about early on in this discussion. And councillor Lipton had some comments about as well, is that C three property? Because it's a, for me, it's a purposeful open space. It fits a lot of the things, Mayor, that you talked about, the purpose for open spaces. That's something, is there some fungible idea that we could consider with that? For asking what we support and don't support. I don't support everything above disk drive. Being. Requested, demanded, how you want to put that, is open space. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank Mayor Protim Maloney for. Being direct and articulate about what he supports and what he doesn't. I feel like part of the problem that we're having right now is that even as folks are requesting. You know, to work on this more, we're actually not getting any information about. You know, what their demands might be or what the conditions that they might want. I feel like I've been fairly clear about what I want, and I'm willing to work with everybody here. But we have to know more about what folks want. So I would encourage folks to to say like. You know, councilmember Brown, you can go pound sand, but at least at least we would know where folks stand. So that's, but in order to move us forward, people need to start. You know, show their cards a little bit.
Councilmember Dickinson.
I love showing my cards. I'm really bad at doing anything else. Yeah, I mean, I I think I, in general, I think the proposal is reasonable. I think in general. It's a commercial area that is looking to be developed and 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 I know a lot of the residents, and I respect so many of them and know so many of them personally. There's a bit of a. I don't want anything there, and that's on a position I can hold as a council member is to say that no development can happen. I I I believe that, you know, it is our duty to. Allow development to happen where it is supposed to happen, where it's in our comprehensive plan to happen. And so our job is to figure out how it can be done best, and how it can be the most environmentally friendly, how it can be the least impact, how we can be the best with the wildlife and all those things. So. I don't want to disrespect our. Public that has poured their heart out to say, don't turn this open space into a development, and it's hard for me because it's a it's a privately owned. Commercial land that can be developed, and so it's it's really hard. I am okay with some clustering and okay with five story buildings in the right spots that are low in the area that don't. Ruin the view shed. I'm okay with the quantity of open space. I would be happy to shift some more towards the pond, though I do understand what they're saying about. That, but I think that's a priority. I'm really happy with the park area near the. Middle school, high school, elementary school. I'm happy with Campus Drive in general. I hear what the mayor's saying about moving it north, and I would support that. I also think. That with the road going south of that portion of the open space, that portion of open space connects to the northern. Properties that are that feel like open space, even though they're not big O open space. So I think there's some connectedness there. If I'm riding my bike through, it kind of feels like it's all open space. So I don't I don't have as much of a problem with the road coming south, but I would support it getting farther north. I'm okay with the four lanes coming in. I think that, as I mentioned earlier, I mean, the traffic around Monarch is so bad. The one lane road on eighty eight might actually be an issue, but but I'm okay with with expanding those roads a little bit. I'm happy that we're going to have bike paths. I'm happy there's going to be what is currently private space is going to be open space. I want as much as possible without. It being considered by our attorney of taking. I appreciate what the mayor and Kyle are trying to do to get as much as we possibly can without. Of course, breaking any rules or or putting us in any jeopardy, but trying to get as much open space as possible, and I support that. See if there's any. And, you know, with regard to whether this is needed or not. You know, again, that's not really a question that council is answering, whether or not. A a new office building is needed to be built. If a developer builds it for someone that occupies it, then it's needed, and I don't think a developer is going to build a building. With no tenants, that's not a good development strategy. So it may not be developed at all, which I think would make a lot of people happy. Or maybe develop because people want it, but no developer is going to develop something. That no one wants. That's not, that's not the idea. That's not the plan of of money makers. And I guess lastly. So I'm trying to put everything out there. Yeah, I mean, I think Monarch High School itself, the whole, sorry, K K Monarch High School. Development, you know, obviously predates me. I was in high school when when I was at Fairview High School and Monarch was built. And it's kind of built out in the middle of nowhere, and I don't know what the conversation looked like then. I don't know what the conversation with the prairie dogs. Or the location or the roads or the use of that land. I don't know, I I don't have that historic conversation of. Of how we allowed a Vista to be built and Monarch to be built. And I don't know how this moment compares to those, but for me, this is an area that as my whole childhood, it was storage tech. It was always something that existed there and and to build something in the storage tech area next to Monarch, next to Vista, next to thirty six. Is reasonable, but I am so with the environmental cause. Of this needs to be electrified, this needs to be net zero, this needs to be the best development possible in our community. But this needs to be a shining example of what development can look like, and that's what Louisville can be proud of, is that if you build in Louisville, it's going to be amazing. And so that's what I want. I want to work with the developers, not for the developers. not for the developers, and I don't represent the developers. I, I definitely don't like that idea. But how do we work with them to get the best possible result for our residents, for our community, and for what we want to be developed in our, in our areas? So tho- those are basically all my thoughts. And if anyone feels drastically different, I'd love to, to hear that so we can start bouncing against each other.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would just like to echo everything that Counselor Dickinson just said. I agree with the importance of being a shining star for sustainability. I agree that I would like as much open space as possible and, but without requiring that everything above disk drive be open space. I would be willing to give a little in, in height variances, et cetera, in order for them to be clustered and give us more open space. So, yes, I agree with, with everything that Counselor Dickinson just said. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahy. Councilmember Lipton?
So, this has been a very interesting conversation, and I agree with much of what's already been said. You know, this issue about disk drive, I mean, to me, it's a very artificial line on a map. And I, I think it's not any artificial, it's arbitrary. And I really don't have evidence that anything, that the property of the north has more value for open space than just a line on the map than some of the other properties. I, it, I find it confusing and bothersome that we, you know, we want the most sustainable development we possibly can get. But to do that, you do need open space and you need to have density. I mean, there's no way to do sustainability without some reasonable allowance for density. At the end of the day, this project has to work. I mean, we've heard the, you know, the citizens say, well, what happens if, you know, it only gets half built? What happens if it gets, you know, one building built? What happens if it fails? We don't want this thing to fail. We want to make sure that we have a general development plan and a sustainability plan, and we have the right mix of open space and density to help ensure that this thing succeeds. And it's not going to succeed if we, you know, basically shuffle the deck so that the developer or whoever the future property owners are, you know, can't make a pencil out. So I'm, I'm supportive. I think, I think we can do a little bit more on sustainability. I think I've offered some suggestions. Maybe we can talk about next time. I do like the idea about trying to have more open space around the pond, but also recognizing that, you know, that what's given up in terms of developable land might have to be, you know, placed someplace else and in a reasonable way. So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking there's more work to be done, but I think we can, you know, do, we can, we can approve something with some modifications that we can be proud of and that I think the developer can work with. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody. That was very, very helpful to get people's comments out. And Councilmember Lay has his to add.
Yeah, I, I guess my suggestion that we put it over may not be where, where we're at. I, I'm sort of getting that by implication. There's been so many really thoughtful comments tonight. I, I think on the open space, I'd, I'd like to get more, I, I think more is warranted under the criteria than we, than has been proposed. There's no question. I am, I think like Councilmember Lipton, I think where I was struggling before is, I think it is, I think it is, there's no reason to my mind why, where to, where to put that line exactly and why describe is the boundary. But I, I'm not averse to, to, because I think the mayor makes very good arguments about that. I said that earlier. So, and as far as where campus drive goes, I, I, I think there, I think you raised good, good points about that, Mayor. I, I'm, I could go with, with it being in a different place than has been suggested. I'm, I'm fine with, with having some density. I think to the extent we can get more open space, just as a matter of our own criteria. I don't, I'm not averse to giving a little bit on height, on height, although I want to know exactly what we're going to be agreeing to in terms of feet before we get done with all of this. I agree with quite a bit of what, what Councilmember Dickinson said about the configuration of the open space. And I, I, I think pulling back a bit, my sense is that we can reach some sort of consensus. Maybe, I, I don't think everybody is so far away from one another that we can't do that. I think there's some, it seems to me that there's some tension between the concept of purposeful open space and, and I, I think everybody's got, I, I don't know that I could say anybody isn't really searching for that. We interpret, perhaps interpret the criteria slightly differently. But I think everybody's looking for something that's purposeful here. So, I, I, you know, it may be, it may not be what, it may require some compromise. I, I, I'm just not, and I, I'm pretty optimistic. I just think it takes perhaps a little time, and I think it takes, and it's worth taking the time to make sure our decks are in order about all the kinds of conditions that, that we're talking about. So anyway, I, those are, I guess, a few. Trying to think if there were other, you know, there, there undoubtedly, there are other points, but those are the main ones that I think I've got going through my head right now.
Thanks, Councilmember Lay. So there were a couple of people that brought up this question about disk drive and why disk drive and it's arbitrary. The applicant's own presentation material and own habitat expert and wildlife expert, I forget the company, High Plains, or, and I can pull it up and find out their name, but they identified the area that was most important and that they are in north of disk drive. I mean, they showed picture after picture to us that basically is disk drive over and how valuable that view shed is. And it was used in all their slides and showing the water and why that water is so critical to supporting life and why the trees are supporting life. So I do think there's a lot of photographic evidence in the applicant's material that show why disk drive is, disk drive is a good line of demarcation because below that, to the south of that was developed before more heavily. And north of that, there, there are the water features that are such an important keystone for life. So I, I was not at all trying to be arbitrary in the selection of it. And so, you know, if there are other water features to the south that people have identified that we didn't include as well, I would want to include those as well. If there are other view corridors that are critical to the south, you know, we should look at those. I looked, I spent a lot of time looking at the three D models that the applicant provided for us, showing us those five-story buildings right next to those ponds and how they block the corridor and the different buildings on top of the berm and how they block the corridor. And so I wasn't at all, I guess I'm just trying to say, I wasn't trying to be arbitrary with the selection of the area. I think that's the most critical for the view and for the wildlife habitat. And, and just the, I, I guess one other comment I'll, I'll sort of reflect on is there was this sort of con- conversation Councilmember Lipton brought up around open space and density and making sure the development's successful and that, you know, you have to have density for that. And it brought me back to when the developer and, and some of their staff members were talking about the lead certification process and that, well, we can't do lead goal because we don't get enough points because we're not close to transit line or we're not in downtown. And the reason that you don't get points when you're not next to transit liner in downtown is because it's less sustainable. That's compact development, it gets more points because you don't take as many resources if you build in the urban core. And if you build on the far fringe of the urban growth boundary, it's called sprawl. And so there's an accounting system that's been made up to account for that. It's less sustainable. The trips will be longer. It takes more resources. That's why you get fewer points. And so maybe we do want to make up for that deficiency. We, we can't change the location. The location is where it is. But maybe we do want to make it a little bit more challenging. Like, yeah, if you built this in downtown, you would have less emissions because there's already transit to downtown. There's already density with apartment buildings right there. There's already housing. There's already shopping. There's already all of these things. So, yeah, maybe the land costs a little more or you don't own it or whatever, but it's more sustainable. And that's what we're supposed to be promoting. And so maybe we shouldn't accept this, this argument that, well, it's harder to get points, so we shouldn't require it. So I would be happy to list the proposed conditions of approval that, that I have and go through them, but I'm not sure the best way on that. And I guess I felt a little surprised that Councilmember Lipton was just going to email in his point of view. I don't think that's how we've done things in the past. And I guess I would ask the city attorney or the planning director if that's how you'd like us to go forward, is just to write up our narrative and email it in? Or if it's better to do it in the hearing or how we should proceed on that because it does seem to put us at different advantages if some people's thought process is documented in the packet and drafted up. And so I just, I would like to understand from the staff perspective, how we should proceed with that.
Mayor, this is Kathleen Kelly, City Attorney. I think as the presiding officer, you can determine how you would like the council's deliberations to proceed from here. From a legal standpoint, you know, the important thing to keep in mind is just that everybody has access to the same information and discussions. So, you know, if written comments are going to be provided, then they'll be put in the packet as Councilmember Lipton's were, so that we make sure that we keep our quasi judicial hearing process pure.
Okay, that's great. And then, so if folks are all comfortable with that, maybe we follow Councilmember Lipton's lead and just put all of our comments into the packet before next time, and then we can go through each other's comments. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I, I also don't see the disk driveline as an arbitrary one. And, and the reason I use that is, is because that has been undeveloped previous to this point, right? I, I think for me, it really breaks, the thing that we really focused on, there are conditions in three categories. It's open space, it's transportation, and it's sustainability. And I think we, we probably need to, we need to settle on how much open space we're going to require. I think it's clear that I favor a, a large amount of additional open space because I think that's consistent with what our code requires. I think it's consistent with what our citizens require. You know, in terms of transportation, I think that some good points have been raised about, you know, the induced demand, creating large roads that then allow people, more people to drive. I also think that, you know, understanding how we're going to pay for all of these improvements that are going to be required by this particular development. And then in the sustainability section, I think you hit the nail on the head, Mayor, when it comes to the lead certification. We need to be, basically be offsetting the increased, you know, trips that this, this particular campus is going to, to create. You know, we, we need to, we should talk about density and height. I think it's important to think about what's consistent with our particular, you know, with our town and, you know, the heights that we have in, existing heights. And then I think this electrification issue is a huge issue. And, you know, clearly, clearly there are different opinions about that. But the direction that, you know, I think, you know, best practice is going is toward electrification. And we should do everything in our power at this point to make sure that we're not putting gas lines into these buildings. So I think, I think that those are, those are sort of the way that I break down the conditions at this point, if we're talking about approval. And how, how I'd sort of like to, to think about it. But I do, I do think that, you know, I'm happy to write in comments more as long as everybody does that. And then, and then talk about each one and, and the specifics, but we may need to have a motion at some point, maybe next meeting or whatever. And then, you know, vote on various amendments to that motion so that we can, you know, take the pulse of the council on each one of these things. Because I think that, you know, if people, if there are members of this council that don't think it's appropriate for us to, to require additional open space, then we should know that.
Thanks, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah. Mayor, thank you for clarifying the, the point about the disk drive, because I think that was, that was helpful for me. I appreciate that. And I, I wasn't, yeah, anyway, I, I, I understand the, the rationality of it better now. I, I took Councilmember Brown's point. I don't think anybody frankly is suggesting that the, based on the criteria that we have to follow, that they're satisfied with the amount of open space that's been set aside. I don't think that's what anybody has said so far. I may be wrong about that, but I, I certainly, I could say very much that, that I think there's a good, good reason for requiring substantially more open space than what, what has been provided in the plan so far. It's, it's more a question of thinking more through that about, and I think looking a little more carefully at the map and seeing if that, you know, where the line is best drawn or the features that we need. The, the thing that I really wanted to say was about this, sort of the procedural piece. I don't, I don't think, this is my sense, I don't think we're going to have a discussion by memo back and forth. I think that would be a huge mistake. And just not the way we've ever done things and not the way we should do things. I think it is very helpful because this is such a, an important proposal, and there are a lot of moving parts to it. I mean, we can boil them down. I think we've done a pretty good job of trying to do that. But it's not a bad thing for, for each of us to bullet issues that we think are really critical and offer some suggestions about those. That's what I guess I think would be useful. I think that would advance the discussion. It, it, I don't think that it would, it would, and I think it would, it would drive the discussion toward a conclusion because we do need to reach a conclusion. So that's, that, I think it's a, it's absolutely appropriate to proceed that way. We can meet again and everybody can list their stuff out then, but then, you know, we haven't had a chance to really think about these points. And frankly, the public may have some thoughts about the comments that we're making too. So that's, that's what I would say.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Lay. So I appreciate everybody's wrap-up comments for tonight. So it sounds like we'll need a motion to continue the hearing to a date certain. And so I'll ask staff if there is a date that you all have looked at for continuing the hearing.
We looked at August thirty-first, which is a fifth Tuesday. There's no meeting scheduled that night. If you'd like to schedule a special meeting for just this topic, we could do that.
Perfect. And thank you. And does that work for the applicant?
Yes, that will work for us.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Buckle. And so just so folks know, since we're making it on a new day, typically what we've done is we'll pick back up with council comments. But to be fair to the applicant and to the public, we'll give a round of public comment and applicant comments at the hearing because people may attend and have additional comments. So I just want people to be aware that that will be posted on the next meeting and the applicant will have a chance to respond to public comments and to council comments that are made tonight and at that meeting. And the public will also have an opportunity to comment at that meeting as we do. And so, and then we'll have our council deliberation in action. So it sounded like there was general consensus that discussion and deliberation is more fruitful than a memo. But if folks wanted to send in an outline of some ideas, that might help facilitate some of the discussion, but that we shouldn't use that to replace articulating our point in the meeting and discussing it. That's what I think I heard. So I will move, we continue ordinance number eighteen eleven, series twenty twenty-one to eight thirty-one, twenty twenty-one at six P M. Thank you. Thank you. That's perfect. Mayor Protam Maloney seconded. Any discussion of the motion? Councilmember Fahy?
Oh, no discussion. I was just gonna make the motion or second it.
Oh, thanks, Councilmember Fahey. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries, and that takes us to Resolution fifty-seven. I move that we continue Resolution fifty-seven, series twenty twenty-one, a resolution approving a planned unit development to allow construction of approximately sixty-four thousand square foot industrial building and a lot consolidation of lots one and two, C T C filing two, to create one lot. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, Mayor, Kathleen, sorry to jump in. If you could have a date and time as part of your continuance?
Thank you. And my motion is to continue it to August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Does the second chair agree?
Second.
At, at six P M. Is that?
Six P M. Yeah, thank you. I have a question, City Attorney Kelly. So I'm about to do several of these continuances in a row. Can I say six P M. for all of them?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks. Any discussion of the motion on continuing Resolution fifty-seven to eight twenty-four, twenty twenty-one at six P M? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. That takes us to the next item, and so I'll move that we continue Resolution number fifty-eight, series twenty twenty-one. A resolution approving a planned unit development to allow for a mural on an industrial zone property located at fifteen oh one Empire Road to eight twenty-four, twenty twenty-one at six P M. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion of the continuance? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Next, I'll move that we approve ordinance number eighteen thirteen, series twenty twenty-one. An ordinance amending title seventeen point one, six point one, seven oh of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning swimming pools and spas on first reading. I'll move, we approve it on first reading and set the public hearing for nine twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. That takes us to our city attorney's report.
I have no report this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. That takes us to council comments, committee reports, and identification of future agenda items. Are there any committee reports that can't wait? We've been running late, so I have delayed several committee reports. So I just wanna let everyone know Denver Regional Council of Governments is working through the greenhouse gas rulemaking on transportation emissions. It's really complicated because this is something that our community is valued so much, and we need to take critical action on. And so I'm just looking really closely to make sure that the rule actually drives action and that we do, we are making progress in reducing transportation emissions. I have some concerns that we'll set up some rulemaking to be able to make it seem like we're making progress, which is of course not what anyone wants. Then you're just doing extra work. So stay tuned for that. And at Metro Mayor's Caucus, we have had a, a number of discussions around COVID and things like that, but I just wanna bring up this topic that was buried within Senate Bill two sixty, which is this empowering TPO's idea. So TPO is a transportation planning organization. Ours is Dr. Cog. And this legislation had a lot of things in it, and one of the things that it had was to enable the transportation planning organization to become a taxing authority. And so without asking our council, the, the Denver Regional Council of Governments could then put a taxing measure to a vote of the people. And so in the past, our community has not necessarily been served well by these larger taxing authorities. Like the Stadium District is one example where our community voted against it, but it happened anyway, and then we were forced to pay. We can all remember Fast Tracks where we paid for a train and haven't gotten the train. And so I think it's worth having a conversation if we want to opt out. And so that's allowed through Senate Bill two sixty is to opt out of the TPO taxing authority. And then, of course, if we ever wanted to opt in because they had some tax proposal that looked really good, we could. But then we would have to opt in, and it would prevent a case where, you know, council, like, let's say I didn't go to, to Dr. Cog meetings. I might not know that we were going to be entered into a taxing authority. So that wouldn't happen. I haven't missed in however many years, but I'm just saying this, this, it, it's easier, in my opinion, to opt out and then opt in if you would like to be in than to have to opt out when there's a contentious issue in front of you. So I think it's a conversation worth thinking about and worth understanding, especially in light of the Front Range Passenger Rail District that was just created, which is another, yet another taxing authority over our community. So we have all these layers of taxing authorities, and I think it might be worth opting out of just this one. That is my report. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks. I just wanna say that the Economic Vitality Committee is meeting this Friday and having a discussion about, well, a report on our business assistance program and discussion of revisions to that program moving forward. And Director Pierce has been just doing a fantastic job, and I think you guys have been seeing a lot of BAPs coming in, a lot of action coming into our community. And I know that's a huge piece for, for so many of us that vacant spaces are getting filled and new businesses are coming to town. And so if anyone wants to tune in, it's Friday, this Friday, one thirty. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. And in the mail today, I got a flyer that said Ace Hardware is open. So I don't know if any of you guys know about the ribbon cutting. I haven't seen anything yet, but I got a flyer, so it must be true. So I'll see you guys all over at Ace Hardware. Any other council comments and committee reports? All right. Seeing none, we are adjourned for tonight. See you all soon.